The time is now four thirty-six on Monday, May twelve. I call this City Council Chamber Special Affairs Committee meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Al-Alemin is not in. Dr. Lewis is not in. Ms. Priestley? Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Mashack? Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
You have four members present?
We have four members present.
Counsel now stands at a quorum, Madam Clerk. I will now be reading the Disorderly Persons City Code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code subsection thirty-one dash ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery in disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meetings. Are there any requests for agenda changes and/or additions? Seeing as how there are no requests, it is now time for public comment. First public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The first speaker is R.L. Mitchell.
Hello. Good evening, Counsel. I'm R.L. Mitchell. And for the record, to you, Mashack, you can don't worry about telling Madam Burns to pray. You can really pray now because we let the last hostage loose a few minutes ago in the Middle East. And you can really, really pray, "Thy kingdom come." Because nobody can, ain't no lie, you're gonna stand in front of God, present, when you pray. So only the pure and hearted, when you pray, will listen. Hello, Mashack? And enough of attention on Mashack about the situation in Flint, about the little peoples getting a job over on Door Highway. They gotta get educated first to put them chemicals in the water. But they doing it anyway because it's a rush. This generation can't wait to grow up like them. I was on the bus the other day, a two-year-old baby. I thought couldn't talk. We was riding by, the Tribun's Gym, and they saw a whole bunch of special kids getting in. And she said, "Mom, they going on a field trip without me." And that's when I realized, these babies, they know how to run cell phones and all the smartphone, but they don't know how to stop a leak in the roof, or that pee pop falling in our water over on Door Highway. Want to address that. I'm talking direct to the new generation. And like you see, America, you see, they always think the peoples ain't got no infidel, like the Muslim call the peoples, the infidels. Put the public speakers before the topic and let them speak and they have a debate. They don't want you to speak at the same time and want you to speak at the same time. Figure that out. And we'll never get nowhere. There ain't nothing but poppycock. And all the peoples in Flint, like they did, I hate to, the late Maes. They set him up to make mockery of him, and then anyway, we gonna stand here and tell Mashack, "Address us like she supposed to in the name of the Lord." Because we not, this is the biblical days. All this spiritual stuff only happened to spiritual peoples like the president that just came in, Second Ward. I be seeing her out there in the streets, she be talking stuff. I don't know, as she knows what she talking, she just, I just, I let her talk for herself. But anyway, stay tuned, America, of course, we getting about to get close to our money and stuff. But the mayor downstairs won't, still ain't came upstairs to address we the people.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Jessie. I can't read the last name.
Good evening. I was just inquiring about what's happening with the Arnz Bondsman office. That's on. Y'all hear me?
No, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just inquiring about the Arnz Bondsman office. I was wondering when y'all gonna let, open it back up?
Okay, thank you, sir. We are not allowed to respond until during council response. Are you done? Okay. Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Pastor Timothy Hicks.
Good evening, City Counsel. I'm Pastor Timothy Hicks with Christian Love Faith Center located at thirty-two oh-two Flushing Road, just before you again appealing for your consideration for funding for some of our outreach programs that we've been trying to do. Some of them we've even had to postpone or cancel because we have been requesting funding and have not received anything. And so we have done everything that was asked of us, even doing an affidavit and being a, having a sworn affidavit to be presented stating that we did turn in our applications and that we were working with City Council, we were working with several of the City Council officials in regards to the funding, the ARPA funds, to where we could have done some things to better enhance our community outreach. And to this point, we have not received anything, but we're just steady, seem like we're going around in circles and we've been asked to come back before the City Council, even after doing affidavits and everything else to let you know that we did apply. And we have not still heard really anything or received anything. And so we want you please reconsider and that we would be able to receive some funds to be able to better serve the community that we serve at large.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Audrey Young Mohammed.
Yes, I'm Audrey Young Mohammed, Second Ward. One of the things I would like to address definitely is our community's safety. I know at one time prior to two thousand seventeen that the City Council had a committee that was a safety committee, and they went out and they did visits, and they had a meeting once a month, included the state police, city police, county sheriff department, included various leaders from the community. Couple of them in particular that I attended was over at Christ the King Church under Father Schmitter, where we talked about different things that was going on in the community that was posing safety issues. One of the issues at that particular time was we're getting the state police to know better the residents in the city because it made a, definitely bridged a gap between the city, the citizens of the city of Flint and the state police instead of them just coming in when they saw that was a problem. So sometimes you might see someone out having a mental health challenge, but if you know that person, you know, oh, they not acting like they've had their medicines today. Let me take him home or her home so that way she can get the proper help and assistance that they need. So those are some of the things that was talked about in that particular safety meeting, different ways of bridging the community and law enforcement together. But I don't see any of those things happening. And as a result, we see what we see happening in our community on a daily basis. Crime is still up. You know, we had some different programs that was coming in that was helping to assist in the communities, like lookouts, like you know, your neighborhood engagement communities. But a lot of those things are not encouraged, and they were highly encouraged in those meetings. Those meetings was taken out into the community. Those things need to happen again, like drastically. We see it happening every day. There's problems. There's something going on. There's some incidents that happen I have not ever seen reported in the news. There was a murder around the corner for me. Was not in the news, was not anywhere at all. And I looked, because I looked and wanted to see because the neighborhood I live in, we don't have problems like that. Somebody had to call me and say, "Did you know somebody got killed around the corner?" Like, when? Where? Didn't you see the lights? No, I was in my house. I didn't see nothing. I didn't expect, expect to hear that. And that wasn't even a month ago that that happened. As a matter of fact, it was on April the eighteenth, the exact date. It was April the eighteenth. But these are the kind of things that we need to start addressing in our community. It's hot, it's gonna get hot, weather gonna get worse. So if we don't hurry up and take care of these problems, guess what? We going to pot this year. I hope y'all take that all into consideration.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The buzzer haven't gone off, so I still have four seconds.
So you are not allowed to stand there silently.
Anyway, so I'm allowed to pause for a second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Now you have a great day.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next public speaker.
Next speaker is Doug Matthews.
Hello, everyone. My name is Doug Matthews. I'm a veteran and a good government advocate from the Seventh Ward. In the classic Christmas movie, It's a Wonderful Life, Bedford Falls is a good, honest town, until greed and corruption turned it into Pottersville, a place of chaos and darkness. Sadly, Flint is at that same crossroads today. Leading the march towards Potterville is Mr. Potter, the villain, with his lieutenants, Snakebite, Big Sleazy, and A.C. Dumbass, followed by-
Excuse me, pause the time.
What?
Pause the time. So, Mr. Matthews, you have to watch your language. This is not your first council meeting, so please refrain from using vulgar language.
Which words were you objecting to specifically?
I believe you said Mr. Dumas's name incorrectly. Please continue.
Snakebite is so notorious, a racist demagogue, that she needs no introduction. Big Sleazy, Flint's most foul-mouthed resident, has built a reputation on financial fraud and food-stamped chicanery.
Point of order.
Please pause this time.
You know, I'd fall over dead if I was ever allowed to finish my comments.
Please pause your time. What is, what is your point of order?
Big Sleazy? Let's not use that. I'm calling you to order, Mr.-
So you have the chair's permission to continue? That is acceptable. Go ahead. Please.
Now she claims to be the future of the Third Ward. Then there's A.C. Blank, Mr. Integrity, who stood before the Ethics Board and lied, claiming he heard me shout a vile racial slur, a lie so outrageous it would be comedy if it weren't so dangerous. But the real Mr. Potter in Flint is Dennis Pfeiffer. And just like Potter, Pfeiffer sneers at accountability and dreams of tearing down order. He literally promised a bonfire right here in the chambers when he spoke last. A fiery purge of rules, a Caesar of control through chaos.
Madam, Madam, share your point of order. Yes. Excuse me, with the resident from Burton in the black shirt, please stop yelling out during meeting. Thank you. Go ahead.
That's not leadership, that's tyranny. It doesn't stop with them. Some on the council cheer for them, and some in this audience cheer for them, either out of fear or because they think they can ride the coattails. Others do nothing, say nothing, pretending silence is a shield. The Third Ward deserves better than chaos merchants. The citizens of Flint deserve leaders who stand for truth, not for lies. And you, Counsel, must hear the thunder in the distance. "Ein Sturm kommt," Hitler told the German people. "A storm is coming." If Flint chooses Potterville, it will be because good people stayed silent, including good people on this council. You don't have to. You can organize a writing campaign for someone who believes in decency, honesty, and accountability. You can reject the fraud, the lies, and the bully who dreams of bonfires. But only if you act. Because a few brave voices can still save this town if they have the courage to speak them.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Sandra Jobin.
Good evening, guys. Thank you so much. But I just wanted to tell you that the tables are getting ready to turn, just in case you don't know that. You might have a few more seats that might be empty to, so you might want to get ready for some other council members to vote for because it looks like somebody's gonna be in trouble. So in case you didn't know my name, it is Sandy Jobin. And since we want to do politically correct all the time, until you guys get up here and you allow anything else to happen, like for instance, when they call you Red Rooster, I never, 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 never mentioned it to you. I was never disrespectful in any way. But yet you want to turn around and do that to me. As far as an outsider, I'm not an outsider. Your guys' schools come to our schools, we go to your schools. This is Genesee County. This is not no outsider outside of Genesee County. And this is United States. So I'm not no outsider. This is just a total laughing joke of what you guys do and the waste of money. And by the way, wasting money, what's happening to the Third Ward? Where is, is that gonna be a back pay? Or is that going into another LLC or a nonprofit organization? Or what exactly does, what happens with the money for the extra city council that's not being used? Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The final speaker for this meeting is Beverly Biggs Levy.
Hi, my name is Beverly Biggs Levy. I just want y'all to listen to something that I gotta, came to me.
Yeah, Mrs. Biggs Levy, this is Robert at the St. Andrews Episcopal Church poll site. There's been a few voters showing up just recently, and Liddell Lewis and LaShawn Johnson are both here, meeting the voters. And I went up and introduced your campaign to the voters, and Liddell Lewis and LaShawn Johnson are bringing up a bunch of negative stuff about you attacking the council members. And they're using that on the voters to try to persuade them not to vote for your campaign. I just wanted to let you know, if you want to send somebody else over here to this polling site to combat the arguments of LaShawn Johnson and Liddell Lewis teaming up here.
You got, you got the president of the council up at St. Andrews talking negative about me. You got LaShawn Johnson- You got LaShawn Johnson talking negative about me. Is this the kind of corruption y'all go for? It needs to be addressed. And it's not the first time that Liddell have done this, and it won't be the last. This corruption of her, the way she's talking about me, if she cleaned up that Second Ward, the way she videoing about me, she'll be a bad sister. Clean up your own front door and your back. Y'all gotta get this together. I'm not here for no corruption. I'm not here to bash nobody. But it's time out, Liddell. It's time out. And you think it's funny? It's not. It is not. We got to we gotta do better. Ain't that what your words say? If you know better, you do better? Duh. Do better. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
That was the last speaker.
Oh, that was the final speaker. Seeing as how that was the final speaker, it is now time for council response. Council members may respond to all public speakers only after all public speakers have spoken. An individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak during council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the Sixth Ward, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I do want to say Flint has some very good people. And those good people showed up and voted and cast their vote for who they wanted to see represent them. And things are gonna change. Things will change. You'll be able to have people have been waiting on funds to be funded. Uh, the two missions that are in the Fourth Ward, you know, the the Second Ward, St. Mark, and Pastor Timothy has been asking, our hands have been tied. We didn't have five votes. It's not that your project isn't worthy. We didn't have five votes. We didn't. And so Judy's over here against your project, just so you know, as I'm sitting here. She's making, we didn't have five votes. And so the the people, the people, yeah, you did. You did. And so the people spoke. It was the will of the Third Ward. We have to honor that. So congratulations, Beverly Biggs Levy, and congratulations, A.C. Dumas. And to the people of the Third Ward who picked your own person. You went and cast your ballot either at the polls or you cast your absentee ballot. And that is a part of what democracy is. If people don't like it, you should have got out and helped the other candidate. But this is democracy, period, plain and simple. And things are going to change, not till August, I'm quite sure, and they will. And so what we have to understand if people say, oh, I'm religious, you know, God doesn't make mistakes. He doesn't. I know that we have got five votes that we can start feeding this community. We will in August. And that's what I'm looking forward to. Five votes who will do the will of the people with the monies that we have set aside to take care of the people.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during public speaking? Councilwoman in the Fifth Ward?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to thank all of the, um, speakers. Thank you for first being here, coming out to attend, um, the council meetings. And thank you for being engaged in the process. Um, and Ms. Beverly Biggs, I just want to say one thing to you, and I'm just gonna leave it there. No weapons formed against you shall prosper. Believe that, okay? Let them talk. Let them do whatever they need to do. Because guess what? She didn't win. She didn't win. So. Sometimes you gotta stump the devil out. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Next public, I mean, excuse me, anybody else during council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the Fourth Ward?
Yes, in regards to the ombudsmen, that's we have nothing to do with that. We have no control over appointing the ombudsmen. That's totally on the Ethics and Accountability Board. Per the charter, they're the ones responsible for for choosing that person. I wish we could help, but it's not of our control. And also, in regards to all of this allegation that I I have spoken to you many times, you know where I'm coming from. And, um, I have voted for every food access except for one. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the Second Ward, you have the floor.
All right, thank you so much. So definitely want to clear up some things that was said here. Um, Pastor Hicks, I know that your outreach is in the Sixth Ward. Not once have the Sixth Ward representative brought anything before this body. So what we will do tonight, we'll put a motion on the floor so we can get that money moving tonight because I don't want to hear excuses. This is the first time. Now she's saying that I'm lying. Not once have this.
Please pause the time. Please pause the time. What is your point of order?
My point is she's speaking to my motives and Emily Dorr, that was in her office. So the councilwoman in the Second Ward is lying.
So, um, I don't know that she's speaking to your motives or lying. What she pointed out was that it has never came before us. So please continue with your time.
Thank you. So because we've never seen that, but I spoke with you as well, and I know what you're trying to do. I'm a hundred percent for it. So tonight, we'll put that motion on the floor so we can get that money moving to do what you need for it to do. Time out for the excuses. We were waiting for your council person. Didn't happen, so we move. In terms of the council person being at the polls speaking negatively, we have a Third Ward candidate that stood probably at that lectern and said, I said what I said, and I don't take it back. So if you're probably talking about our deceased council members, if you're talking about, you know what? I'll let them hear it again.
Second, third, and fourth, you you clowns. That's what you are. You clowns. Why you didn't get that girl her money? Because that's the type of person you is. You need to take that rabbit money hat off the top of your head. Put something in your forehead, bring them bangs down, because you got the biggest forehead there ever was. Judy Priestley, everybody's tired of seeing young titties hanging to the floor. I have to stop them. And I have the receipt to go buy some. If it ain't big enough, you can go to little more than a handful. Call them. They will open the doors and and, uh, bet you for what you need. You guys are a joke. That Quincy, I did call your job today.
So no, so no lie detector here. We have, uh, someone running for this seat who's vile and use those words. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response? Councilman in the Ninth Ward, you do have time. All right, um, seeing as how he has declined his time, I think I will go ahead and take mine. I think one of the things that was said tonight, um, has kind of been echoed throughout the community. Mr. Matthews, we do hear you loud and clear. We hear the others, members of the community. Um, however, I I do want us to be very clear. Like you said, in the democratic process, there are other options. And so all we can do is see if people exercise other options. And if they don't, then the Third Ward picks their representative, and that's where we are with this. Um, I also wanted to point out, I think, um, there was a resident here from Burton who often interrupts our meetings. All I ask is that she would be respectful of our meetings because I don't hear about her at Burton meetings causing problems. I don't hear about her at county meetings causing problems. I don't hear about her at any other meetings in Genesee County causing problems. We are not a prop for you. We are not a show for you. We are not a reason for you to get your name and face out there. There's one thing, if you come to our meetings and you have dialogue that's respectful and you say things that are factual, but you do not. You come with an outsider perspective, simply jumping on a bandwagon, and that is the reality. I also want to correct something Ms. Muhammad said. Um, I believe she said I was glaring at her. No, Ms. Muhammad, you were talking about something that I feel is very important. Therefore, I was looking at you and engaging with you, giving you the time and attention and respect that a comment that is actually about city business deserves. You talked about the fact that we needed to be, um, paying more attention to public safety initiatives and the fact that it's getting hot outside. I wholeheartedly agree. We need to protect and preserve as many lives as we can this summer. And whatever way we need we have to do that, we should all work together to do that. Ms. Mary, did they take care of your concern yet? All right, I will get right on that tomorrow because they said it's in there for you. Um, and they were supposed to, I think they it's got to have somebody special to do what needs to be done, but I will follow back up with that. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, we are now moving on to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the Second Ward?
Thank you. So, um, I would like to put a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. But before we do that, is it possible to go ahead and put a motion on the floor so we can get the Christian Faith Love Center resolution going?
Um, so I think we can, I hold on one sec. I just want to be sure because a motion is always in order. Um, so if you give me one second. Excuse me. Woman in the Second Ward, it is my understanding that you can put the motion on the floor, but you also have to specify that it is going to be reduced to writing at a later time. But you can put the motion on the floor, um, for the support for Christian Love Faith Center.
Okay, so thank you. So, um, Madam Chair, I would like to put a motion on the floor to give Christian, um, Love Faith Center, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for their food initiative. And we will produce the resolution in a later day.
All right, thank you. Is there support for the motion? It's been supported by the Councilwoman in the Fourth Ward. Um, I this is, I guess, I guess I have to do discussion.
Matt, yeah, you do.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure something out. Give me one second. Um.
This question is to you two.
Madam Attorney, give me one second. I got you. One second.
Did you get it all up?
Right, they not gonna do it. They think them rules say you gotta have.
I am.
Because we couldn't, we couldn't do it before.
Um, I just want to be clear that we can, because a motion is always in order and it was supported. And she said that it was going to be the resul, it was going to be reduced to writing at a later time, that we are good to move forward with discussion on this.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like the floor in the first round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the Fifth Ward?
I'm sorry, I will not be voting on this tonight. We need a resolution. I will not vote on anything that I do not have a resolution for in front of me. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like the floor in the first round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the Sixth Ward?
Thank, so I want to be perfectly clear because this is the first time we've been allowed to do this. Before it's before it's been said you can't do it. So through you two, um, um, our city attorney, um, do we need the? And I haven't had, I have my rules out, but I know prior, we could not do this without a resolution. And maybe I need to go through because we couldn't even put anything on the agendas. So through you, Madam Chair, to the city clerk, the city clerk, are we allowed to put anything on the agendas?
Per the council rules, any council member can add an item to a committee agenda. And only the president or the chairperson can add anything to the regular councilor meetings.
So that is why I haven't, thank you, put one on, because the president who, acting president, didn't want it on. Now, they've been talking to her. It's disappointing because they could have did it. The mayor could have sent it up. They haven't did it, but I guess she this is a show me time, I guess, but I'm getting ready to show you you're not telling the truth. So, Madam Chair, uh, Madam Clerk, also in addition, are we required to have a resolution? Because we have been told the past since April twenty-two, twenty-two thousand twenty-four, twenty-second, that you have to have a resolution.
So anything of this nature is to be reduced to writing by resolution or ordinance? So, yes, a motion can be made, but as was stated, it can be brought later. But yeah, for something of this nature, um, the rule stated you have to have a resolution or an ordinance.
Okay, thank you. And, um, Madam, um, Chair, through you to Councilwoman Priestley, how much do we have in food access? Okay, she don't know. She hunched her shoulders. So why, and she hunched them again. So why are we doing this if we don't have money? I mean, you, this is the part.
Request for information.
Please pause the time. What is your request?
Um, so just through you to the speaker, she asked, why are we doing this? We're doing it because they put in for the funds. They've been requesting it. This is your ward, so we want to make sure.
Okay, that's improper.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Uh.
So I'm asking.
Please continue, Ms. Burns.
Judy, who was the finance chair, because things should be done in decent and in order. And as you, as the acting president, should know that. So again, Ms. Priestley, do you know how much is in food access?
Ms. Burns, I developed that spreadsheet as an aid for us.
So let me pause both of y'all.
Okay.
Allow me to properly introduce myself. I'm the chair.
Thank you. Through you, sorry, so sorry. So sorry. I will I will apologize. Through you, Ms. Chair, to Ms. Burns, I have stopped updating that spreadsheet.
The time should be going.
I have stopped updating those spreadsheets and I'm now no longer following the, um, and following the expenditures.
Okay, thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, too, is anyone in administration can tell us how much is in food access? Because they asked for seventy-five. Why are we just giving them twenty-five? So is it anyone in this administration that knows? Okay, well, it it looks like it's. Yeah, I mean, and why? That is definitely, so is there anyone? So through you, Madam Chair, Mr. Taylor just walked in. Maybe he can, he knows. Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Taylor, the Deputy Chief of Staff.
I don't think, like you said, he just walked in, so I'm sure he doesn't know what's going on.
Okay, can you call him to the podium, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Taylor, would you please join us at the lecturn? Mr. Taylor?
So I mean, we should be able to find out who does know, and that would be my question. Who who does know? Mr. Taylor, I know as you're coming, the clock is running down. I hope you've had a, it's a beautiful day out here, but if you can tell me, who would know how much money we have in food access? They asked for seventy-five. There's been a motion on the floor for twenty-five. It didn't come from the administration. Normally, it would come from the administration. Can you help me out here?
I can't.
You can't? So you don't know who know. How do we find out what's in food access?
Maybe, uh, Seamus is trying to look it up. Like I said, I come in the middle of it. I don't even really know what you're talking about.
Okay, how much is in our fund for food access? Normally, what's the process? Normally, this this type of resolution would come from the administration. They stated that they have been dealing with the administration.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Uh, I'll wait. Seamus is back there. So Seamus, if you get, he's got his speed, he's. Um, my time is gonna run down, so I'll have to wait Seamus the second round. Hold, hold, I'll have to wait to the second round.
All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak during the first round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the Ninth Ward, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, first, Madam Chair, can I have you to help me to understand with this particular resolution, how it's gonna work? So we are, it was brought to the floor.
Mm-hmm.
A written resolution to follow.
Mm-hmm.
Does that follow after we vote to approve the funds? Or is this approval to go to committee? Or is this approval to go to committee? How is this actually working?
Absolutely, let me help you out, 'cause two things, 'cause I also see where you're going next, so I'm gonna go there before you. At any point in time, if y'all really wanted to know what food access meant to them, what they're gonna spend the money on, or who they serve, y'all all have five minutes to call them up there, so that's point one of quit plan. Number two, um, her resolution was very clear, the resolution that's been put on the floor here in Special Affairs Committee, 'cause we're in a committee, this is a committee, the resolution that was put on the floor was to give them $25,000 for food access, which means if we vote this through through the committee tonight, it goes on the council agenda tonight. She also said with the resolution to follow, if you're wondering what's gonna be in the resolution, again, you have five minutes where you could've been asking them. When, that, after it leaves out of here, it will go straight to council, and if we voted through through council, then bam, the $25,000 that they've been trying to get from Ms. Burns for I don't know how long, they will be set tonight.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Through you to the pastor.
Request for information, request.
What's your, I'm sorry, go ahead, what's your request?
My request is, do you know, that was from the mayor, they've been dealing with them, and I guess you, I, they told me they couldn't get it. Emily Doer told me the mayor was not giving that money, period. Yes, she did, sure did, and it's in my email.
All right, so if you wouldn't like to share that email, that would be wonderful, so that we could all be on the same page with you.
Yeah, she said it wouldn't be done.
No, and, and I'm, I'm not questioning whether or not it's real or not, but if you wanna share that email so that we could all be on the same page and see that the mayor is the one who rejected this, we would love to see it. Okay, go ahead.
She not making no point over here.
Good evening, sir. Can you tell me again, what's the name of the church?
Christian Love Faith Center.
Christian Love Faith Center. And can you tell me, uh, or share with me, what, what service do you all provide currently?
Uh, right now, we were, we were doing specially, specialized food service, uh, because you have a lot of people in the city of Flint who have special needs because they have health issues, and they can't eat everything that the food bank and the food different places that they have distributions are, can eat. So you have low sodiums, you have people with high blood pressure, you have all kind of health issues, cancer and everything else, and we do specialized food for particular families, and we service the families, and we do it through DHS, we do it through the Chamber of Commerce, we do it through Cedar Street, we do it through the Shelter of Flint, the YWCA, the Women's Shelter, and also the, uh, we do an off-site feeding of the homeless up here on, uh, Fifth Avenue and MLK. We do that every, every so often, uh, throughout the year, to feed those that are homeless and are less fortunate.
So, I, I heard you earlier state that you had to cancel some events. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Is, is it, is it that you had to cancel it specifically because these ARPA funds weren't received, or because you had run out of your other funds?
We ran out of everything.
Okay, so, so what, in what other ways are you funded?
Through my own pockets, and through ju- just donations of individuals that we request, uh, help and hand from.
And how long have you all been running your program?
We've been doing this, uh, since two thousand six.
Since two thousand six, okay. Um. So, is there a, a particular vendor that you have relationship with that you get these foods from?
Uh, Food Bank of Eastern Michigan, but we usually, we don't do it at the normal where they pay per pound. We do it because we buy the name brand, because a lot of stuff that they, that, that you get from the, in the bulk, uh, paying by weight, a lot of that, the average person can't eat it. Uh, you have to doctor it up a lot to make it feasible, uh, for some families, 'cause we go and service families throughout the community, and we find canned goods and everything stacked up on their front porches, because they say, we can't eat this.
So, so you all do somewhat of a more home delivery type?
Correct.
So how, how do people? How do people, how many households do you service?
We service, oh, over fifty a month.
Okay.
And it all depends on the needs, because we not just with a certain list of individuals, but we do it as people have needs, as people fall upon hardships, or just need a helping hand, 'cause everybody is not just down, but everybody has issues or circumstances where, that are beyond their control. And in the times in which we living in now, it's just beyond everybody's control.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like the floor in the first round of discussion? Uh, Councilwoman in the fourth ward, you have the floor. I thought you leaned forward to your mic.
No.
Okay.
Ma- Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry, Councilwoman in the second ward.
Not a problem, so, um, so through, through you to Councilwoman Burns, could you please, um, send that email to the body from Emily Doer, so we can see it?
Um, Councilwoman Lewis, you know I don't deal with you, 'cause I don't even like you, I don't, so.
All right, so that has nothing to do with us moving the business of the city forward. Sorry Pastor Hicks, that you're caught between foolishness, as we're trying to move on your behalf. And so, again, she made the assertion that she had an email from Emily Doer? And we're looking.
Please pause the time, what is your point of order?
She needs to quit speaking to my motive, I'm going through my emails right now in between, but I also had a conversation with Emily, which she did state that it was above her pager, which I shared with you. And he was in contact with, um, with Nick or in that department.
What's your point of order?
So, my point of order, she needs to quit speaking to my motives.
So I'm gonna.
I'm looking for the email.
Thank you, I'm gonna rule on that, she didn't speak to your motives, she repeated what you said. You said you had an email.
Yep, I'm looking.
She's asking for the email.
Yep, and I'ma work on it.
All right. Okay, continue.
All right, thank you, so as we wait for her to produce the, the email, so we can all be on the same page, um, I would like, so I know our councilman in the ninth ward, he was asking about your project, um, and I remember you saying, um, that it was about food distribution, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, so who have you been working with in terms of making this come to fruition? Well, for one, let me ask you this.
The mayor.
How were you paying for this food distribution in the first place? To my knowledge, didn't you say it was coming out of the church's coffers?
Yes, and as well as, as well as our own personal, personal pocket.
Okay, so, so this is paid for, this is strictly a grassroots, no grants?
No.
Deal, you're just working on behalf of the community?
Correct, we never have received anything.
All right, all right, and, um, and how many members of your congregation do you have?
Uh, right now, we currently only have about twenty-five.
Twenty, okay, so twenty-five members plus you and your wife, you are feeding approximately fifty people per month, and you're helping them with their specific diet. Okay, let me also ask you this, so ha, seeing that you have like a, a small body, does that leave room for any like close to $20,000 pastor appreciation check? So are you getting those kinda checks coming from your church?
Never have.
Okay, all right, so just.
I haven't, I've never even received a pastor's appreciation, okay, not where they come and generate money. My, this has been a labor of love. I, I have been pastoring for thirty-five years and have never taken a salary.
Hmm, okay.
I've always, I've always, and I give the church more than I've ever, ever been given.
Okay.
And so therefore, I, I've been doing this for thirty-five years, and I do it because the Lord has called me to do it, not because I wanna do what others have done.
Okay.
And get big checks.
Okay, and so the people that you serve, because you are a city Flint resident?
Yes.
Okay, you and your, so thank you all for still choosing to stay in Flint, and also your church, thank your church for being here in Flint as well, it's such a blessing. And so, you are dealing exclusively with city of Flint residents, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you're passing a lot of the criteria that we're talking about. All right, so who exact, who have you been working with to make this happen?
Uh, we've been working with Liddell Lewis, we've been working with Candace Mushat, we've been working with Judy, um, and, and these are the ones that we've been working with, and then also Sister Burns. Uh, that's what, where we started off with. And so, this is where we are now, is that we've still been trying to make something come to pass.
Okay, thank you for that, and, um, and a little bit about that, um, the affidavit. So why did you have to do affidavit?
Uh, they wanted to make sure that we had filled out the application and had submitted the application, so we had to do a, submit a sworn affidavit stating that we had submitted the application, and that it was done in a timely fashion, and that we met the criterias of the timeframe, uh, before, so that it would hopefully be approved.
Okay, okay, thank you. So it looks like that you have met every single mark. It looks like that, 'cause you, you keep hearing that no vote, that you don't wanna have the votes, that we wouldn't vote for it. Again.
Yes.
Um, the councilman in the sixth ward never brought this to this body. And so, we're here today, and we have enough people here to pass this, so you can continue doing the good work, not out of your pocket, not out of your church meager funds. So we have some food money. They say you asked for seventy-five thousand, we put a motion for twenty-five on the floor, because, um, yeah, because again, that's what we put on the floor.
Yes.
And you initially, when this came down in twenty-twenty-one, this is twenty-twenty-five, so that seventy-five thousand dollars you asked for, it was supposed to start at twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah.
So the reason why I said, um, twenty-five thousand, is because these monies must be spent by December twenty-twenty-six. And so that'd give you enough time to continue with your mission, and give you enough money for, I guess, prorating it, yeah, to say the least. But yeah, so just to let you know, I'm in full agreement, there's no reason to say no, 'cause you're doing a great work, so thank you and the First Lady, and thank you office for supporting the North Side.
Thank you, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the first round of discussion? Councilwoman Priestley, you're the only one who has time, no?
Um, okay, I'll take a couple minutes. So, we are seeing, uh, the food for other deserving organizations being held hostage because Saint Mark's was not given food. And that's exactly what is being done. I'm not going to do this unless you do this. And that's how it, how it's happening. Forget about the need of the other people in the community. And I just wanna call the hypocrisy out of that fact. If people need food, they need food regardless of where it comes from. And there's no reason to not vote for an organization, Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes.
They're yelling out.
Um, audience, please refrain from yelling out, continue.
Thank you. So, there is no reason to provide funding to organizations. Matter of fact, the councilman in the sixth ward brought Saint Mark's, and then the following week, Bethel, or the same time, I voted for Bethel. But she forgets about that, she remembers, I didn't vote for Saint Mark's, but I voted for Bethel. So, because it, she, it, the money is being held up for all deserving organizations because of one. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I guess I'm the only one left in the first round of discussion, so I will go ahead and take my time. I do appreciate, uh, you coming down here. Um, I know that both you and First Lady attend these meetings often, that you're very involved in the community. I do wanna clear something up, though. Um, when they asked, who have you been working with, I do wanna be clear that, um, we were bought in on the latter end. Um, I believe you were working with other council people before we were bought in, and they were not moving it forward. Who were you working with before you were working with us?
Before, we were working with Quincy Murphy, and also Eric Mays, a, as well as, uh, uh, Ms. Tanya.
Okay, and so I just, I just wanna be clear that you were working with Mr. Murphy, Mr. Mays, and Ms. Burns on this effort, and that you turned in your original application to one of the three of them.
Yes.
So the original application, nobody else in the council actually saw the original application. Um, and so, by the time you got to us and you told us that you put in an application, the reason you had to sign that affidavit was because nobody had even seen the original application. Now, my colleague says that Emily Doer, who is no longer with the city, so we can't confirm nor deny, because she's not here, we do not have access to her emails, said that there's an email from Ms. Doer that stated that, um, the mayor is not, was not doing whatever. I, I'm not privy to that, this is the first time I've heard that. Uh, and so, once my colleague sends us the email, we will all be on the same page with that. I do want to say, though, that, um, I think you're being a bit modest here, because additionally to feeding people, you also clothed people, you, um, have items for expecting mothers or mothers who, uh, are currently struggling. I know that you give, you give out diapers, correct? I know that you give out infant clothes, correct?
Correct.
I know that you give out formula, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that you also use, allow your space to be used for community meetings as well, correct? And so when we talk about this twenty-five thousand dollars, and we talk about food access, we have to be completely clear that, you said around fifty, uh, um, a month, but there are so many other things and other people that you serve. And so, I want us to be clear that your church has their doors open three hundred sixty-five days a year to the entire community. I know you also do some work with seniors, where out of your pockets, you throw them dinners, and you make sure that they have a place where they can come to kinda get a reprieve.
Correct.
And so you serve from the very newborn infants, all the way to some of our most seasoned seniors. And I, I appreciate your modesty, you gotta go for the gusto right now, because everybody needs to be clear that you are doing the work.
Yes.
That you are doing exactly what churches are supposed to do, that you are feeding the poor, right? That you're clothing them, right? That you're opening your doors, that you are literally embodying the work that Christ has called us to do in that Bible. So I just want us to be clear and not make it seem like, oh, it's just twenty-five people. You've got twenty-five people, but you're feeding twice that much a month, and that's on the low end of what you're feeding. And then additionally, like you said, you either depend on donations from somewhere else, or you and your First Ladies take that money directly out of your own pocket to ensure that the community continues to get help.
That is correct.
So when we talk about the work that you're doing and what this twenty-five thousand dollars will mean, twenty-five thousand dollars will mean that at least, because again, you're being modest, at least fifty families will be able to eat, that fifty children will have food secured, that fifty mothers, fifty fathers will have food secure, so they can continue to go out and do the work that they need to do, so that they can sustain their families one more day.
Correct.
So we, we gotta be clear on the work that you're doing and what's on the line, go ahead.
And in addition to that, 'cause we do, uh, we feed over two hundred individuals during Thanksgiving, as well as for Christmas.
For sure.
Where we prepare the food. And then we partner, that we, we work with, uh, MTA, where they provide transportation to seniors at their different high-rise, uh, facilities. And they pick them up, bring them to the church, we feed them free of charge, and then MTA takes them back home.
Right.
And we do that twice a year.
And so, I, I, I just want us to be clear that this is an environment that provides families with dignity at one of the toughest times in their lives. It is not easy for someone to say, I had a child, and now I am struggling with getting my child the basic necessities. And so when you open that door and you take that shame that people feel, because it's no fault of their own, economic times are economic times. But the, the shame that you take off of them by having your doors open, it's important that we speak to that. It's important that we speak to the fact that people's stomachs are full. It's important that we speak to the fact that pantries, um, will not go empty because of the work that you're doing. It's important that we not play around with the fact that she said the resolution will be written later, so we can go ahead and vote on this now. And if they wanna know clearly what's in the resolution, we can just call you up here, 'cause we all have a second round. With that said, that's done for me for the first round, next public speaker in the second round. I mean, excuse me, next councilperson in the second round of discussion.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
Thank you, um, through to Seamus, if he can head this way, if he can tell me how much is in that account. Um, but while you're there Pastor Hicks, so you've dealt with Councilman Mays.
Yes.
You've dealt with Quincy Murphy.
Quincy Murphy.
Liddell Lewis, Judy Priestley, the mayor.
Yes.
And so you were dealing with everybody.
Trying to.
Right, and so, at no time, because they're really trying to say like, I did not talk to you, did not forward your emails, when you first came over here, you sat on that side and said, I submitted mine, but, and you, and you, there were others.
Yes.
And no one heard anything. So, the fact that not just yours, but there were others, and feeding the community shouldn't have to be, I know you would want other parts, 'cause we have the money. Um, through you, Mr. Seamus, how much do we have in that account?
Thank you.
Um, so, the last report was about six weeks ago, so I know it needs to be updated, but on that report, there's about four hundred thousand available in food access.
Okay, thank you, Seamus. So, I would like to, um.
I didn't hear the number, you said it.
I would like to amend the motion, since we're gonna feed the community, and being a pastor, we wanna make sure everybody eats. So I would like to add Saint Mark's to it, I would like to add East Side Commission, Compassionate to it, and Franklin Avenue, so that we're feeding all four, let's feed the community. So, um, Madam Chair, put a motion to feed those four, and we have four hundred and something thousand in there.
There is a motion on the floor, an amended motion on the floor to add, uh, we don't have a dollar amount for each.
Uh, we, well, we can, well, let's just start with giving them all twenty-five thousand.
And what were the, what were the, um.
East Side Compassionate Mission.
Okay.
Franklin Avenue, Saint Mark, and then also. and then also Timothy Hicks.
So there is an amended motion on the floor to give twenty-five thousand dollars to, that was four organizations, correct? To the four organizations mentioned by the councilwoman in the sixth ward, is there support? Supported by the councilmen in the ninth ward, is there a discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
Thank you. So feeding the community, because we have the money, we now found out that there's enough money, so we're going to feed all of them. That is what I want to have done. So that will be a wonderful thing. So, um, no means would I stop and hold up anything, and that is not of my heart to do that. Feed everyone. Because there's a food shortage. I was on the phone this morning about not having, uh, uh, living in a food desert. And so I know where you at. So I don't want them to, this notion that Councilwoman Burns wasn't doing anything. I'm, I'm not the president of this council. I'm not the vice president. They have their committees that they chair. They could have and should have put it on if they were communicating with you. They should have, and they didn't. So what I will do is absolutely support this. Take care of our community. We now know we have enough money. Give everyone, share the wealth. Feed the city, the entire city. I'm done, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the, uh, first round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
Yes, thank you so much. I am definitely for feeding the entire community, especially when the community lives in the city of Flint. And so we have the Saint Mark pastor on record stating that he is feeding individuals that's not living in the city of Flint. And that's what these ARPA dollars are for. And when you,
I know what it is, but I don't think everyone understands. Can you tell us what is a, a full giveaway?
Well, uh, President, uh, Deacon Carl Davis and Agnes Napier does, it's a lot of work behind the scenes. You see the food that's out there, but then there's a lot of administrative, uh, work that you have to do behind the scenes. And so we have to shop for meat, and then we have a truck that comes, and the truck is about a thousand dollars apiece. Um, and a lot of times we get two trucks, you know, because we know that it's going to be wrapped around the corner. Um, we have had so many issues as it relates to, uh, the parking or the line, because at one time it was going all the way down to Leek Street or Saginaw.
Please pause the time. What's your request?
My request is, um, uh, to the councilperson in the second ward, have you received food from Saint Mark yourself or friends?
All right.
Councilwoman in the second ward, continue.
Redirect them and put them on Dupont Street, and then, so now we're on Iroquois Street. So we're wrapped around Rankin to Iroquois to, um, McClellan Street. So King School is over there. And so, uh, we sometimes need more, more food. It's just a great need in our community. So we serve, uh, the, well, we don't ask people for their address, uh, most of the time unless, you know, that's, unless we're directed by the food, um, by, uh, the Eastern Michigan Food Bank, because we try to follow the rules as best as we can. But, uh, we see a lot of four-eight-four-three-three area codes. We see a lot of Grand Blank. Um, we got all the area codes. Everybody just come around, even in Fenton, so.
Okay. So with that being said,
Request for information.
Please pause the time. What is your request?
Uh, my request is, did she hear where she state, where the pastor stated? They have to do as requested by the food bank.
Continue, Councilwoman in the second ward.
Thank you. So the pastor said that they service individuals from Flushing, from Grand Blank, with these, where?
Sandra, please stop yelling out. That is your first warning.
So this money, and Mr. Jared and Mr. Pfeiffer, if he was here tonight, he's one of the people that stand firmly on if you're not exclusively using this money for the residents of the city. Not for Grand Blank or Flushing. This is for the residents of the city. That's why the Flint Institute of Music got voted down, because you all were saying that they were serving autistic kids outside of the city.
Point of information.
Please pause the time. What is your point?
I want to be perfectly clear, because she's the scenario. That was not my reason for not voting for it. I feel that should come out of a different pot of money.
Please, please, no, no, that is an improper point. You have a second round in which you can state that. Please continue.
Thank you. And so that was the reason why a lot of our colleagues decided not to support the autistic kids residing in the city of Flint. But what we just heard, we heard the pastor of Saint Marks saying that they are, they do, they have a long line. They have a long line of people from Flushing. I'm not a liar. It's fine.
Excuse me, no, focus on your comments.
That's, no, I'm here. So it's all about, he said that he serves Flushing and Grand Blank and other areas. That's not what this money is for. You have to be, you can't be a person of, of a double mind. Either we're going to serve everybody or we're not. What are we doing here? And according to him, he's serving out county people. So as far as these dollars, they don't qualify. Moreover, Saint Mark, they have, they still have community block grant dollars that they have not spent. So we're giving this church extra money that they have not spent. Point of order.
Please pause the time. What is your point?
Heard the quorum. Can she stop yelling, please?
Councilwoman Burns, please, continue.
So we're giving them money that they have not spent, and now we want to turn around and give them some more money, set aside from the federal government exclusively for the city of Flint. Now Grand Blank received ARPA dollars, Flushing received ARPA dollars, Genesee County received ARPA dollars. These ARPA dollars right here are exclusively for the residents of the city of the city of Flint. And so if we're serving anybody outside of those parameters, and this is the precedent that this body has set, thank you, Mr. Jared, thank you, Mr. Pfeiffer, we are not, I'm not supporting anything that's not exclusively serving our residents. And based off what my colleagues have said in the past, they shouldn't either. So that's why I'm not going to, I'm not going to support that resolution. However, I would like to amend the resolution and remove Saint Mark, because they have money from the city they haven't spent, and they're not serving the Flint residents. So, thank you.
So there is another amended motion on the floor to remove Saint Mark and only do the three other, um, organizations. Is there support? Is there support?
I supported that.
Oh, I didn't hear you. It's been moved improperly supported by the councilwoman in the fourth ward. Discussion in the first round.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
The reason why I support removing Saint Marks is because all the other organizations have come before us and been, stood in front of us and was, and answered questions. Saint Marks never has.
Request for information.
Please pause the time.
Request for information.
What is your request?
Um, so through you to the speaker, did Saint Mark apply for food access dollars?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Please continue.
So that is why,
I'm sorry, pause the time. I didn't hear you, Councilwoman Burns. What was that? Okay, go ahead.
So that is why I will not support Saint Marks. Let Saint Marks come before us and address our concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else in the first round of discussion?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward, you have the floor.
So I think the favor saying is, provide clarity to whatever. So first of all, in the video or whatever she, she played, you have to go, you have a contract with the food bank. The food bank, as he stated, because you didn't play at all, I don't know what your hatred is for, but it's deep-seated. It's in your war.
Point of order, point of order.
Please, please, um, pause the time. What is your point of order?
So this is really what it looks like when someone's speaking to someone's motives. So she's speaking to my motives, and that's not true.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Burns. That actually is speaking to motives. Please refrain from stating that she hates him. Please continue your time.
Here it is. We have a person, she's been in the line and been in Saint Mark's line, getting food, but not willing to support it. Uh, he stated in the recording that as directed by the food bank, he has to follow the food bank. That's why he continues to get the funding. Simple as that. People are hungry, you feed them. Simple as that. I have worked the food banks, packed the food up, put in their cars, put the water in. I've worked the food banks, the help centers. And it's not easy. So you, they said he got one point five million. That was a lie. That one point five million went to Saint Mark's Episcopal Church in Grand Rapids. It went to Grand Rapids. So they will tell a false narrative. It's not true. The money he hasn't used, he doesn't have money for food. They shut down last week. They sent a flyer out. They don't have money to feed people in the second ward. They don't. I want to feed everybody. We have more than enough money, and we should do it. Him not coming here, he came here in November. He's, he's come twice, and he spoke. It's on video. He's been at the podium lectern, whatever you want to call it. He has spoke before this council. So the, whatever this deep-seated, feed everybody. We have enough money. We now have that. Thank you, Seamus, for providing us with that. He does not have money he hasn't used for food. That is a blatant lie. It is a lie, lie, lie. They shut it down to where they could not feed them. They shut it down. They don't have the money. He didn't get the one point five million. Didn't get it. Saint Mark Episcopal and Grand Rapids and Kent County, which is one of the wealthiest counties in Michigan, did receive it. So now we have an opportunity to feed all four, to feed the Franklin Center, to take care of you, Pastor Stokes, uh, Hicks, to feed the Franklinish, the compassionate. We can take care of four, and we now know how much money. So it should be the will of all the council, because you're feeding it, and especially when the council member in the second ward has been in that line. I cannot imagine not supporting something that she is needed or a friend has needed, and the convenience of it. But now it's a problem, because he said, hey, according to the direction of the food bank, and maybe people don't know, they give you those, and it's not just their center, it's in the contract. It's in the contract that every person or association or organization have that they have to follow the guidelines of the food bank. That is a fact. So we have an opportunity to do something great here tonight. Feed every side of town, every side of town. That'd be the north side, the northwest side, and two on the east side, where we have food deserts. Simple as that. Pastor Thompson has been to this podium. He has been here numerous times. He has been here. So I'm not going to let you or lie or whatever. Now is the time, let's come together, feed the community. This is what this category of ARPA funds is for. Have the will to do it, and then we can move on. We don't, I don't want to be here all night long. We done went over all this other stuff. Now you wanted to be Saint Mark, you ate there. You got food for yourself or somebody else. You should really be supporting it. So I am not supporting no amendment to remove Saint Mark. I'm not doing it. He didn't get the one point five million. He is, he does not have food access money for food, and when you get these grants, you have to use them in the categories that are, that is specified. You cannot co-mingle the funds. You cannot do that. So that needs to stop. Feed all four, and we need to support it. She's over here. That's just, this, that needs to stop. I'm not supporting an amendment to remove Saint Mark. All four, or I'm a, I'm a no on it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like the, um, floor in the first round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
I think I saw Ms. Winfrey Carter. I'm, I'm not sure. Did I see you or no?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Thank you. Um, I said this before, I'm not going to support any of this tonight. First of all, it's not on, on the agenda. We do not have a, um, resolution for any of it tonight. I don't even know why we going on and on about this. Bring me a resolution, then I'll support it all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So woman in the fifth ward, um, we're still in the first round of discussion. Councilman in the ninth ward, you have time. No. I definitely said, man, please don't yell out. That's your first warning. Um, moving on, we are in the second round of discussion.
Madam Chair, I asked for the floor.
You had already spoken during the first round. You did.
For the amended?
Yes. This is our third amendment. You already spoke in the first round. We're on the second round now. Anybody in the second round of discussion?
Thank you.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I, I'm not going to take time on this, because this is going to fail. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so just wanted just to highlight a few things. So we had, uh, as we started, we were talking about Pastor Hicks and his unique approach to food access in our community. His unique approach, because individuals have specific diets. You know, a lot of the, he doesn't have a contract with the food bank. What they do, they go and they get food specific to the person's diet, because when you have high blood pressure, because a lot of people on the North Side have that, certain things that they can and cannot eat. So why give them things high in sodium when that's not conducive to their, to being healthy? And this is what Pastor Hicks is doing. He's specifically making sure that a certain amount of residents have the food that they need to be healthy and to thrive. That's what we initially put on the floor. Then our councilperson, who said on the mic, I don't even like you. That's not what we're here for. We're here because we have been elected by you to work with everyone up here. So hate and love to the side, right now, we're supposed to be allocating dollars and doing things in the best interest of this city. So my point was very clear. It can't get any clearer. The precedent this body said, if you are not exclusively serving, they did this with Faith Foundation Resources. They did it with Flint Institute of Music. They done this with quite a few organizations. They said if you are not serving city and Flint residents exclusively, you do not have their support. With that alone is why, and with the admission of the pastor. Uh, request for in, information, um, through you, Madam Chair, to the councilwoman in the sixth ward. So, so I heard that, uh, Saint Mark was talking about the food bank. Do they currently have a contract with the food bank?
He's in your ward. Reach out and speak to him.
All right. Well, I definitely will love to reach out and speak to him, but I don't know if someone's going to be, try to record my conversation. So, uh, so with that being said, we're trying to do things above board. Hearing fault coming this way is not what we're here for. We're here to give you twenty-five thousand dollars. If Pastor, if Saint Mark wanted, he would apply for it. And so what I'm not going to do, I'm not going to serve an institution through the precedent set by this body that serve, that brags about serving the suburbs. We support you, and we're going to support you tonight. So hopefully you can get your money tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the second round of discussion on the third amendment?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
None of this was on the agenda tonight. None of it. Not any of it. But we don't even have a resolution. And so I don't know what recording conversations is, but you called to cuss him out. You did that. And she's, uh, she, mhm. And she, she proud of it. She cussed out an ordained pastor.
Request for information. Where did you, where did you hear that from? Where did you get that from?
So that's not, that's not, now, that's an improper request. So, so what I,
Hold up. I didn't even recognize anybody else. So Ms. Burns still has the floor until it's recognized. Councilwoman in the second ward.
Okay, so my question is, because she keeps saying it, can you please tell us where you heard this from?
I'm not doing this with you. You know what? You've cussed him out twice. Even security was called at the library. Even security was calling you at the library.
Point of order.
Please pause the time. Please pause the time. What is your point of order?
She is, she's not only speaking to ill motive, she's saying something that's not true.
There's nothing about ill motives.
Please continue, Ms. Burns.
Thank you. So, listen, tonight we have on here four. None of this was on the agenda. But we have the opportunity to make sure we're feeding a vast part of the community. Not with what they asked for actually, because I believe, um, Pastor Timothy asked for 75,000. That was reduced from the original, I think, 150,000. Then it was dropped down to, um, uh, the other ones were 50. So, I'm not passing all four. They're all worthy organizations. They all serve the community. And she wants to talk about, take the emotions out of it. She worried about some recording or whatever, I guess is her reason for, I don't know. Recording she mentioned. Feed all of them. Let the people be fed. That's what we should be doing. I'm voting to support all four. None of this was on the agenda. But if we're here to do the business, we can get a resolution later. Let's do the business. Feed all four. I'm fine. And none of this is the amount that any of them wanted. All of them wanted considerably more. I believe Pastor Hicks needed 75,000. Pastor Thompson was 50. Um, East Side, um, Compassion, um, was 50. And Franklin was 50. And we're only giving each one 25 for a total sum of $100,000 if we can get this passed. And then I guess figure out the, the rest when we got four votes or have the will, or five votes who have the will to finish it. But tonight, we're here. Let's take care of all of them. And that's the only way I am supporting this. Is to support all four this evening. I'm done, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else in the second round of discussion on the third amendment? Got caught chewing. Tick tock.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
Again, I want to reiterate that Saint Mark's received, uh, block grant, CBDG funds and has not spent them.
Request for information.
Please pause the time. What is your request, Councilwoman?
Uh, my request is that mu, does she know that that money was not for food? It was for capital improvements?
Are you done? Alrighty. Anybody else? Uh, councilman in the ninth ward, you, you have time. You're not going to take it? Alright. So, um, this is the second round of the third amendment, which is, um, giving three initiatives money and removing Saint Mark. So, here is the thing. I'm going to take a little time. You going to start my time? I'll just talk and then I guess I'll have, there we go. So, the original intent, because we've gotten so far away from it, we tend to steer off into chaos. The original thing was, there was a statement made that Faith Love Christian Center was not bought before council. And that, uh, anybody had the means to do so or only the chairs or whatever the confusion was. So, Councilwoman in the second ward made a motion therefore to clear up the confusion. It, we're, it was our understanding that it's supported. So, if it's supported, it's supported. She was, she stated that it was supported and the resolution to come later. The clerk said, we talked to the clerk about it. We talked to the attorney about it. And either way, this could be done. And so, we now have Pastor Hicks who is sitting in front of us, who sits here every week whether he has something in front of us or not, who is active in the community every week whether he has something or not. I think the fact that he, as well as others, are getting caught up in something that has nothing to do with them becomes a very dangerous game for us to play with residents or play with people who are offering services. The per, the person that we have in front of us tonight, we have Christian love, Christian faith, and if I'm saying it wrong, I'm sorry. But Pastor Hicks is before us tonight asking for the money. He stated what he does. He stated that he helps Flint residents. He has stated why they need the money, how long they've been in service, everything that they're going to do with it. Everything that we need to go into a resolution, which the whole part of the original motion, now that we're on number three, is already, ready to go and stated in a resolution. And so, what I don't want us to do is look Pastor Hicks in the face because we've already wasted plenty of their time in a conversation that has nothing to do with him. Nothing to do with why he's here, nothing to do with what he's asking for. He would like to continue his mission and serving the community. And so, to hold him and his church responsible for votes or responsible for feelings about people not getting their way about other votes is absolutely ludicrous and absolutely ridiculous. He is the one standing before us now. That original motion was about him. Everybody claimed, appeared that they support him. The only person who has actually given a valid reason for why they will not be voting is actually our colleague in the fifth ward. And when I say valid, I just mean she only want to actually explain something. And she stuck to it because she said she's not voting for any of them tonight because there are no resolutions in front of her tonight. So, everybody else, if we're saying we, we're supporting it and we're believing it, then that's just what it is because this is the reality. Um, I know that the rest of us are in agreement with it because we've had several people make motions and other people support the motion, which I'm not sure, Ms. Winfrey Carter, did you support that motion to add all of them to this? I, I, no, you didn't? Okay, my bad. Bottom line, Pastor Hicks is right there. Roll call, vote for, and Madam Clerk, this is the third amendment and amended motion. And this is to vote for, um, the other three entities. So, that is Christian Faith Love Center. Hopefully I said that right. Okay, um, that is the East Side Mission, right? Councilwoman in the fourth ward. And then what was the third one? And then the Franklin Avenue Mission. Uh, it, thus, this is the vote to give all three of them $25,000. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett is not in. Vote is three yes, two no?
The vote is three yes, two no. So, the third amended motion, which was to only give to the three, that failed. We're going to go back to the second amended motion, which is to give all four organizations $25,000. We are still in the first round of discussion. Both the sixth ward and the second ward have spoken in the first round of discussion. That leaves the fifth ward, the fourth ward, the seventh ward, and the ninth ward with opportunities to speak in the first round of discussion. Would the fifth, fourth, or ninth ward like the opportunity to speak in the first round of discussion? Councilwoman in the fourth or ninth ward, we are, and just to catch you up, that last, that third amended motion failed. We're now on the second amended motion, which is to give four entities $25,000. We are in the first round. Both Councilwoman Burns and Councilwoman Lewis have taken their time. Uh, Councilwoman Winfrey Carter has declined. So, councilmen in the ninth ward, would you like some time? Okay, Councilwoman in the fourth ward, would you like some time?
I've said everything I have to say.
Okay, Councilwoman, the fourth ward has declined. I guess I will take time. I got five minutes, first round of discussion. Just going to reiterate what I already said. And that is, the original motion that was on the floor is to give Pastor Hicks and his organization, his church, uh, money so that they can continue the work they are doing. Pastor Hicks, would you please join me at the lectern? Because I think what has happened in all of this discussion is we have gotten lost on what we're supposed to be doing and the whole reason that this was even put on the floor. Would you please, Pastor Hicks, so that we can all be reminded of the real reason that we're having this discussion, explain to us what your organization does, what your church does, who you serve, and why you're asking for food access money?
We serve the residents of the city of Flint. And we do this on a daily basis and even on an as-needed basis because we have people who come at certain times, but then we also have like emergency situations where families fall up on hard times or they get burnout or they have other things that happen to them. And we use those things to serve them, uh, to get them funds, to get them, uh, uh, food, get them diapers. Because we don't supply diapers, we supplement diapers. Uh, so therefore, we not just a, a place where you just come and get all your diapers you need, but we help supplement to defray your, the, the, the family's cost so that they can stretch their monies a lot further. Uh, so, we do those types of things as well as our clothing, as well as our, we have for newborns, we, we partner with, uh, and we work with the, uh, pregnancy clinic. Uh, for you have first-time moms that, that struggle and don't have the things, the necessary things from car seats all the way to clothing for their newborns. Uh, we supply them with those things brand new. They're not used because we don't do anything new, I mean, used because you have all types of, you know, sanitary reasons why you try to keep everything new. Especially for youbo, uh, newborns when they are so, uh, exposed and so vulnerable for, uh, different diseases and everything else.
And so, Pastor Hicks, I do want to thank you for taking the time to come up and explain once again about these food access dollars. I want you to know though, right? Um, my focus is squarely on your organization.
Yes.
Because that's what the original motion was about. You are standing in front of us now. There are no questions about your organization, nothing up in the air about dollars, about you and the food bank or anything else. And what I don't want us to lose sight of is the fact that you are doing good work. You are feeding the community. That there are families who are blessed and benefit through the work that you are doing. You are the one who is before us now. And that it is not fair for you or anyone else to be held up for other reasons. I can see if the reason being was that you yourself were not offering, um, actual help to the community. That you yourself were not actually serving the community, that you were not feeding the community, that you were not clothing the community, that you were not taking care of the community. I can see if the question was that you were serving people outside of Flint. I can see if the question was that you possibly, um, and I'm not saying anybody misappropriated funds, but I'm just saying for you because you're standing in front of me, that's, that's not on the table for you.
Right.
You don't owe anybody money. There's nothing. You're not beholden to anything. And so, what I don't want us to do is to lose focus of what is in front of us, who is in front of us, and what you're asking for. I don't think you need to be caught up in any theater that is happening or any politics that is happening. Plain and simple. You are here offering, you are here asking for help because you have been serving the community. You are here to speak on your behalf. You are standing before us. You've been able to answer questions that they've had for you. You've been told by several council people that you are supported. I don't want us to get caught up in all this other stuff, personalities. I never worked with, I never liked, that has nothing to do with you.
Right.
The focus is on you. The resolution that will come later is about you and your service to this community. I yield. Thank you. So, I'm, so, uh, we are now in the second round of discussion for the second amendment on, uh, providing money for all four initiatives. Is there anyone who would like the floor in the second round of discussion? Anybody else who would like the floor in the second round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one else who would like the floor in the second round of discussion, this is the roll call vote, Madam Clerk, for the second amendment, which was to give all four initiatives $25,000. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Dr. Lewis?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
No.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
No.
Mr. Alamin is not in. Vote is one yes, five no?
The vote is one yes, five no. So, that second amendment fails. We are now back on our original motion. And we are in the second round of our original motion because everybody else spoke in the first round. So, we're back on the second round of our original motion, which is to give, uh, Faith Love Christian Center. I'm, I'm going to get it eventually. Christian Love Faith Center. There we go. Christian Love Faith Center. $25,000 in food access money. Is there anyone who would like to speak in the second round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
Uh, I have made it very clear that we support all four. They're not all in my ward. We feed the community. A call or something is so trivial. We have the money, but we don't have the will. Feed all four. I've been consistent with that. To say because he took, fed people, they all do. They all do. I've worked those. And it's with their agreement that they have with the Eastern Food Bank as he stated, as directed. It needs to get outside of this. In the meanwhile, all four people could be using this food. Families are not meeting their nutritional value. Families may be going hungry or skipping a meal. Because we don't have the will with this council. Feed all four. We have the money. And those trucks come with protein. You have protein and some of them, I think you get five meats. So, when we look at that, it, it's helping this econ, helping people with this economy and the unsure things that are happening. I had a family, both of them lost their jobs, um, because of DEI. The husband and the wife. And they had to sell their house. They luckily sold it when it was put up, but they had to sell their home. And so, when we look at these things, we have got over $400,000. We're only spending one-fourth of that, 25% to feed and give them till something can be figured out. But this will help them. One truck, a half a truck is 600. A full truck is 1,000. The truck with the $1,000 which you're feeding, um, I know that each, well, I know what Bethel does too, and then also Pastor Thompson. And I think Mother Jones feeds much more. She doesn't need funding because we gave her ARPA funds already. We gave her. So, she is well-funded, uh, at Holy Temple Church, Greater Holy Temple. And so, we have these other four, which there's nothing in between. And so, feeding them, we only using 25% of that $400,000 to feed. One truck will feed. They come through that line. I think it's about a month between eight and 1,200 people per month come through those centers to be fed for those very active. That's a lot. That's a lot of people who are in line. And I don't think you wait in line because you don't need food. Who wants to, to be there? And they, they do it for seniors. Seniors can't meet their bill. So, a lot of it is seniors, that they do DoorDash seniors. And so, I'm only supporting all four and feeding the community. And I'm not changing that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the second round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
So, thank you. So, through you to the councilwoman in the sixth ward, um, does Saint Mark have a contract with the food bank? Okay, thank you.
No, I'm going to answer the question with your rude self. You need to, I'm not his secretary or administrative assistant.
Got it. Thank you.
I'm quite sure he does. Yes.
Alright, so, so what we're doing, we're holding up-
I'm not his secretary.
She said she's quite sure he does.
Uh, well, she-
I'm not his secretary though.
Okay, great. Alright, so, well, you're, clearly you're something because you keep advocating for this.
I'm getting ready to go.
So, here we go. We need to look at a few things. The first thing is, our colleague is holding up good work for people that don't have a contract with the food bank.
He does have a contract.
Okay, he does? Uh, well, guess what? Have him come and, and present it so we can, have him come through you, Madam Chair, to the colleague in the sixth ward. Let's have Pastor Thompson come to the lecture. And let's have him answer all of these questions that we have. We have a question about his contract with the food bank. We have a question about who he's serving because he admitted on your show that he's feeding grand blank. We, we walk out when we're wrong. Pastor Hicks, we can do this today. We can do this today. But you see who holding you up? Saying, it's not about Saint Mark right now. It's about Christian Faith Love Center tonight. That's what it's about. And we have individuals that's planting a faith. So, this is why your resolution never made it to council because clearly looked like it wasn't a priority. Tonight, we're putting it on the floor. You see right here, you have three votes that's highly in favor of what you're doing. Sixth ward councilwoman, she left again. We're here to handle the business and that's what we will do. And it's, and it's unfortunate when we have people-
Please pause the time. Taylor Sampson, you, I can hear you up here. Absolutely. There's your first warning. You're more than welcome. You're welcome. So, continue.
Thank you. Thank you. And so I just wanted to put it on the record. I just
Please pause the time, um, Councilwoman Burns, what's your request for information?
Well, I, um, through you to, um, does she know that for years, I just received confirmation, he has had a contract and in good standing? And he's also been here.
Okay, so
Wait.
So we're not talking about for years, we're talking about currently. Thank you.
Pastor Thompson.
We're talking about currently.
She said Pastor Thompson just confirmed that he's in good standing with his contract.
Currently, right now?
That's what she said.
Alrighty then, so we'll make sure that we ha- we can, you know, let's have him come up next meeting, and we can discuss this. I would love to. And because with the amount that he received for his pastor appreciation check with just a few members, clearly he could fund his own food drive with that. Seeing that you are a, a humble servant who's not getting twenty thou- nineteen, twenty thousand dollar checks for pastor appreciation, seeing that you did apply for the funds, seeing that you are feeding the people in the city of Flint, that's why we support you. Anything else is just noise in the air. Either we gonna do it or we not. Let's see who do it for you.
Are, are you, are you yielding your time? Okay, is there anyone else in the second round of discussion? Okay, seeing as how there's no one else in the second round of discussion, I will take my time. I do, I, I have a, um, I guess a request for information. Who received twenty thousand dollars for pastor appreciation?
Kevin Thompson at Saint Mark Church.
Oh, okay.
Request for information.
Please pause the time. What's your request?
I mean, we, yeah, we don't know that that's factual. Her pastor got the tower power he had five thousand dollars a month for, for a cell tower.
I'm gonna continue with my time, because that had nothing to do with what I was talking about. I have the floor, she does not. I posed the question, so you brought up her pastor when it was something I asked. Long story short, I think I've already said this multiple times, the only thing we need to be focused on is the fact that Christian Love Faith Center is before us tonight. Christian Love Faith Center has been told by several people that they support their mission, they support their work. I didn't hear a but, but now I'm hearing a but all of a sudden. And so when we vote, we'll hear, we support your mission, but you're not important enough for us to not make it political about you. We support your mission, but you're not important enough, and this is to the residents that, uh, you serve, but you're, you're not important enough for us to get over personalities. We support your mission, but unless we get our way, you get nothing from us. We support your mission, but
Madam Chair.
Please pause the time, yes.
Thank you. Oh yes, she definitely needs a warning, she's yelling out during your time. The lady in, the outsider in the black shirt.
Let me, let me, Sandra, that is actually your second warning, you are removed from this meeting. That is your second warning, you are removed from this meeting. That is your second warning, you are removed from this meeting. Excuse me, chief. I believe the doorway is being blocked and that is a fire hazard. Thank you. So, as I was saying, with this vote, we will hear, we support your mission, but we have to make it about everything but you. We support your mission, but when it was time for us to actually support your mission, we support your mission, but not really. Roll call, Madam Clerk. This, just so we're clear, we are back at the original motion, which was to give Christian Love Faith Center twenty-five thousand dollars to continue the work that they're doing in the community in food access. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley? Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
I abstain because it's a conflict, because we should be supporting all four.
Excuse me. Um, madam, not madam, excuse me, attorney. Um, I believe that the only reason we can abstain is if it is actual personal conflict, that is not a personal conflict.
Under your council rules, you can only abstain if there is a conflict.
Correct, and that is not a conflict.
Um, it does not state personal conflict, I said a conflict. It doesn't say personal conflict, so
That is not a conflict.
No, you don't get to define that, okay?
No.
It's a conflict.
I mean, it's fine.
And I said it's a conflict.
It's fine, you can, you
I know it's fine, because the law states it's fine.
They, they see what you're doing, so it's fine, let's go. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Mashat? Mr. Pfeiffer is absent, Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamin is absent, Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
The vote is three yes, two no, one abstention.
The vote is three yes, two no, one illegal expansion. That motion fails. Moving on to, um, I guess our actual consent agenda at this point.
I make a motion to, I think we already did
We did.
Did we make a motion for the consent agenda? I don't think we did.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
There's been a motion made to approve the consent agenda by the councilwoman in the fourth ward, supported by the councilwoman in the second ward. It's the pleasure of the body. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Okay, and I just want to state for the record, it's to move it to council.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin is absent. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no. That item moves to, uh, council. It is now six twenty-seven PM. What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn by the councilwoman in the fourth ward
Support.
Supported by the councilwoman in the second ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin is absent. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no. The time is six twenty-eight PM on Monday, May 12th. This special affairs committee meeting is now adjourned.
As always, to the public, if you wish to speak at this next meeting, you need to fill out a speaker slip. If you have already filled out a slip, you do not need to fill out another one. You guys are being bad.
What banana bread, give me my joke, give me a pop.
We try hard.
Oh, you know that. Come on, I know you're here, man. Here's in your face.
Alright, we are waiting on the attorney to come. See here.
I know what you know, she sound like a check, but she be walking towards.
Let me go talk to him right.
She sound like flipping a roofie off of the house. Before twelve o'clock, at three o'clock, what you get clocked, you'll make it back home, right? I said, see the attorney, come and act like you're working because you got the bill, bro. Sound like some crack.
And all which is yours.
Oh yeah. And Dr. Lewis up there. Don't do it, Dr. Lewis, take one, take one. Hey, don't you go speak doors when you walk, you was, oh, you walk in the car.
Okay, it is six forty-five P.M. And I am calling this council meeting to order per section three dash two oh one of the Flint City Charter regarding the organization of the council. And we will start with the roll call. Mr. Al Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Sorry, just one moment. I'm, um, just want y'all to know, I'm turning down the volume on the microphones. We have a lot of, um, reverb or background noise or whatever. So please, I'm asking you to please speak into your microphones clearly, thank you. Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Mashat?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
You have six members present.
Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley?
I can make a motion to move the reorganization of the council to the end of the agenda.
Is there support for Ms. Priestley's motion? I believe that was Ms. Mashat.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so the roll call on that motion. Mr. Al Alamin is not in. Ms. Lewis, I'm sorry, Dr. Lewis?
Um, yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Is that my mic? What's wrong with it? Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no. So that will take us to, uh, the regular, uh, opening ceremonies.
Did our pastor leave? Did pastor?
Okay.
Alright, so now it is time for the pledge of allegiance. Councilperson Jarrett, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? No, 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 Jarrett, but, yeah, well, here, go ahead, Ms. Winfrey Carter, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now it's time for the prayer of blessing. Do we have anyone that would like to honor someone before we move on with the prayer of the blessing?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Mashat.
Um, the Hudson family in the passing of, um, their grandmother. So Hudson and Peters, I believe, is the original last name. And then also to the family of, uh, Ms. Birdie Smith. And that, I think that's all, thank you.
Alright. Do we have anyone else that would like to honor anyone else?
Yes, um, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
I would like for a moment of silent prayer for the family of Ms. Sherry Bell. In the passing of, uh, Ms. Sherry Bell.
Okay. Alright, anyone else? Alright, so seeing that there is no one else, I will take my time. I would like to have a moment of silence for the family of Ms. Nicole D. Lee. The family of Ms. Nicole D. Lee. Um, alright.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
One more, um, a moment of silent prayer for the family of Mrs. Fanny, uh, um... Bar- Barfield. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So seeing that there is no one else, we will pause for a moment of silence to honor those mentioned. Alright, thank you. So now it is time for the prayer of the blessing. So Mr. Jarrett, could you please lead us in the prayer of the blessing, please?
After that, after this manner therefore pray ye, our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen, so now it's time for the reading of the disorderly persons city code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code, section thirty-one ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery, and disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meetings. Now it's time for requests for agenda changes or additions. Do we have any agenda changes? Alright, so seeing none, we will move forward with the public comment. So the first speaker, Madam Clerk.
First speaker is R.L. Mitchell.
Okay, hello counsel, I'm R.L. Mitchell, for the record, to Ms. Mashak. Well, she was talking to the Reverend about Saint Matthews. He wanted fifty thousand, no, seventy-five thousand. And then, but, Miss, Miss, the sixth ward woman wanted to split it up to every ward. But I want you to know for the record, I was invited to a quartet singer group last, I mean Saturday, this coming Saturday, and, uh, and the girl that, she's my significant other, just like Ms. Burns is. She always look out for a man, that, she always, she says, I'm gonna take you. Forget the girl, I got a free ticket, I'm gonna use her ticket to give to you. And, well, she didn't know where the place was. She used her smartphone and it took us way out in Mount Moore somewhere, then what, she told me to shut up because the, the phone was taking my voice. And the voice led us all the way in the middle of Flint, all, all without, not prior from the man with eight, twenty-five, twenty-five members in this church. I think it was Blackwell Church. But I didn't see the church, but I seen the car, the cars before I got, I was surprised, there wasn't no parking place. And I want Madam Burns to, uh, include the Blackwell on that twenty-five thousand dollar thing. If anybody know about the Blackwell Church, anybody, you know about that? Knock your head, yeah, I ain't know that place exists. That church looks small, but when I got in it, they treat me like I was the one that gonna preach, preach the sermon, because the man kept coming back, well, I was in the back. And then I, I got a crook in my leg, and I just said, I didn't want the girl to, I said, I stood up and the girl, she said, what's the matter with you? I said, I got, she said, go to the bathroom. When I went to the ba-, I had to go there about five o'clock, we was, I didn't notice. Anyway, we had a raffle ticket, and I missed the numbers by two, I would've got all the money in the church. I feel like I was, like my friend Derek Hudson. I was supposed to be with him when he preached this vast sermon over Holy Temple, Church of God in Christ. I remember when the boy was called to be a min- minister, but I'd always be, anyway, he gone. But I won't say that to say this, and the other people's talking about them little, the magic peoples, that's the closest thing to putting prayer back in school, them, uh, they ain't here today, talking about tricks for them little kids, special kids, because they got minds too. I wish they was here today, they was sitting right there the other day, right behind me, all, a group of them. But they let them talk for themselves, because this is generation gonna rule all, and like, get them people's name, like, Madam Burns, include Blackwell, uh, if they don't have twenty-five thousand, give it to like Holy Temple, because they, I believe, because they made me feel like I was, I was the guest of honor.
Alright, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Jesse, I cannot, I forget his last name, I'm sorry. Can't read the last name. I don't think he's in, Jesse.
So I don't think Jesse's here, so next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Pastor Timothy Hicks.
Yep, so he's no longer here.
Next speaker is Audrey Young Mohammed.
Good evening, Audrey Young Mohammed, resident of the second ward. As to the point of Saint Mark's, it's sad that Pastor Hicks was read, um, fed misinformation about it being his church that received millions of dollars. And I know that he was fed that, I know that he did hear that, because he said that to me before the first meeting started. And I corrected him and said, that wasn't this church. And then I proceeded to pull up the article from the church in Grand Rapids and give it to him. But it's sad to say that we still heard that come from, in front of us, from council people that's in front of us. We gotta stop doing that and trying to keep continuing to build a thread or a divide in the community, because Saint Mark's in Flint did not receive that money, and it's sad that people go along with that. To the point of Ms. Lewis cursing out Pastor Thompson at the library. As a board member of the library, that did come to me from security. It was stated, it was said not only by security, but it was said by several other people. And then it was also reported to by one of the medias, that they heard it, and they were there and present. So just know that it was, and you, and you do know I am on the library, remember, you reported me, and car tried to get me removed from the library board, but that didn't happen either. So, um, they told you that wasn't gonna happen, because they know I'm a voice for the people. They know I speak up for the people, and I defend the people at the library and here. And I'll continue to do that, especially with you, so, yep, I did, and they heard you. They heard you there, not only was you heard on the, on the hot mic the first time, but you was also heard, and it was reported by the security and the people that was at the library. You scared patrons away. Patrons said that they don't want to bring their children down there, because they didn't feel they were safe because of what you did. So just know that, that was also reported to the board and to us right down there, to the director. I've told the director several times, I don't have a problem with publicly stating that I told it to both directions, the old one and the new director, of what the behavior was. Um, and they didn't feel that it was a safe place for their children. So let's not, let's not continue to do that. Let's not buy into that. I believe wholeheartedly that the whole council up here, at some point in time or another, would be game to vote for money for Christian, see, I was a member there, so it was Christian little church, missionary Baptist church when I was there, so the name has changed, but to Pastor Hicks and the Christian family over there. So I do believe that that's the case. But let them go in here and bring their resolution here. Let us sit down and feed the city. And I believe that all the churches give food and stuff to the people outside of the city limits. It's not just limited to Saint Mark's, but there's people who come through that line, and they don't want to turn people away hungry.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Doug Matthews.
Good evening, I'm Doug Matthews, a veteran and a public advocate for good government. When Jedediah Brown disrupted the mayor's home, the Flint police became a shield for a powerful politician. They arrested Brown, they jailed him, they condemned his actions, they protected the mayor. But when this same Brown and his mob chased me around these very chambers, threatening, standing... threatening, standing.
Um, excuse me, um, please hold, Audrey Young Muhammad, that is your warning, no yelling out. Proceed, mister, uh, ma'am, that's your second warning, please remove yourself.
Such outrage.
Alright, sorry, sorry about that, Mr. Matthews, so proceed. And, um, hold on, please, pause this time again, give them five seconds, police. She cannot obstruct the door, when you are removed from the meeting, you are removed from the meeting. So unless she's going to another department, she's removed from this council meeting, she should not be in the building. So please remove Ms. Muhammad from the door. Let's remove her from the door and consult with the public safety plan, thank you.
Point of order, point of order.
What is your point?
You are not the fire marshal, number one. Number two, number two, there's no rule that states you cannot be in the building.
Ms. Burns, that's invalid, so I'm bringing you to order. Proceed, Mister, Mister Matthews.
Okay, they protected the mayor, but Sergeant Vincent Villarreal became a sword for the mob, forcing me out while my harasser stayed and celebrated. This is not equal protection, it's special rules. For politicians like Mister Potter, the mayor, and Snakebite and her gang. Snakebite spews racist venom, and it perpetuates and echoes through the days. Big Sleazy thrives on filth and fraud, and AC dumbass lies without shame.
Point of order, I'm bringing Doug Matthews to order for vulgarity.
Please hold, please pause this time, go ahead.
Point of order, I'm bringing Doug Matthews to order for vulgarity, give him a warning.
Okay. All, alright, so, um, please proceed, Mister Matthews, so just to note that, um, I guess, as we're here tonight, we hear that no form of swearing, because it's accepted. So going forward, when you hear individuals swearing, using F-bombs and stuff, make sure you bring them to order. So Mister Matthews, if you can refrain from calling Mister dumbass, Mister dumbass, please, thank you.
You politicians are chaos merchants, pushing Flint towards Potterville. You aren't alone, Mister Potter, Dennis Pfeiffer, leads this march. He promised a bonfire in this chamber, a fiery purge of rules, a seizure of control through chaos. Who makes these special rules possible? The city attorney, who watches in silence while residents are smeared. The Flint police, who shield the powerful but wield the sword against residents. The mayor, who demands protection for his home while the council runs wild. This isn't just about me, it's about any citizen who dares to speak up and then gets crushed. It's about a city where the law has two faces, one for the powerful and one for the people. Potterville takes over because good people stay silent, including some on this council, like Ms. Priestley. The city attorney looks away while lies become laws. The Flint police shield the powerful but strike at those who preach the truth. Because the citizens of Flint are waking up, this council needs to wake up too. You have eight weeks to decide whether you want Bedford Falls or Potterville. We will remember who sued for truth and who stood for tyranny, and so will the courts. Because when the law is twisted to shield the powerful, and when politicians crush the civil rights of ordinary people, it becomes a federal case, as the law department is now learning. Will Flint be Bedford Falls, or will it surrender to the chaos?
Thank you, Mister, thank you, Mister Matthews. Alright, next speaker. Um, so, excuse me, let's not yell out.
Next speaker is Sandra Jovan.
Okay, so first of all, um, as I'm standing back there in the doorway, which I wasn't in the doorway, the chief of the police was, but besides the point. Um, Marsha, you want to make this personal, um, you want to call me Burton, you want to call me everything but my name, my name is Sandy. And if I wanted to make a name for myself, Judy Priestley, you know that my last name is, I run is, is Odell. So if I wanted to use my name that I run for any kind of position, would be Odell. And if you don't know me, um, I started out at Davison Community Schools, speaking at the council meeting there. Then I went to the Burton council meetings, I've been there. Went to Grand Blank Schools, came to city council, went to commissioners' meetings. I went to Lansing, and I don't go out of state, because I have a son that I take care of twenty-four seven. So, let's clarify that one. Alls I'm doing is trying to, um, help people to do a little bit of research in the corruption that's happening, not just city, not just Flint City. This is happening all over the place, and I've said for the last three years, when we the people stand together, all of us, Democrat, Republican, Independents, then come against the corrupt system, is when things will change, and it's about to change. And people are getting nervous, and that's why they want to make personal slaps, you know, against people and calling them outsiders, Burton, whatever you, whatever else you want to call, because I'm not even from Burton originally, so there you go, got it wrong again. But Judy, you can tell your colleague, how many times do I speak out? You gonna sit there silently? Because this isn't the first time you heard me speak. The only place I get kicked out of is here, because they're disrespectful, and they don't believe in the freedom of speech, until it's their people. Now you have a guy up here that's, I don't know, older aged, whatever, and he wants to come up here and say that he's a veteran, which me personally, my dad was a veteran, and I think he's a personal disgrace. But besides that, he can come up here and swear and everything else, and you guys don't say a word. But the lady that got upset because of her son's situation, used the F-bomb, and you immediately escorted her out the door. So it's rules for thee, but not for me. Read your charter, roll the tape back, have a good night.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Beverly Bigs Levy.
Alright, next speaker.
The next speaker is Peggy Bruce Shane Nobleit.
Good evening, I live at three twenty West Second Avenue, and I have an issue at three fifteen West Second Avenue. They have already moved in as a, and I'm gonna indicate that it is an MR1 for the residents in my neighborhood, because it is residential zoned. It's Great Lakes Recovery Mission, it is a rehab center. Um, it's not supposed to be there, it's, um, basically zoning for Flint, like many Michigan cities, divides its lands into various zoning districts, which I have already talked to Dalton, and been expressed to by assessment, that it is zoned MR1, not 2. It is illegal, it is totally unethical, I've talked to Dalton, they are supposed to be, um, I've been calling for months through building and safety, for months. James Patterson and Mike were supposed to be at that house on May 1st stopping the work. I've been calling since last year during the entire winter. Jerry and I have had four conversations, she has helped me immensely, but we are getting nothing done. They are actually moving in. It's ridiculous, there's no parking there, period. It's a two, it's a two-car residential home, it's actually in Carriertown. It's one of the historic mansions, it's the Dalton House. This, I'm freaking, I've lived there twenty-seven years. These people also are five hundred, less than five hundred feet from a church, which that's also illegal and unethical for them to do that. Um, what else? Um, there, like I said, there's no parking for that place. Um, we, our neighbors are all freaking out, we don't know what more to do. They were supposed to be there, James Patterson and Mike, on May 1st. I was there the entire day watching and waiting, nobody ever showed up to stop the work. The work has been finished, unfortunately. My neighbor Monica, she lived there for over twenty years, and everybody probably knows that Monica was the lady in Carriertown that threw all the parties for everybody in the city if they wanted to show up into her home. She's, she's gone, we miss her terribly, and I'm telling you, she's probably rolling over in her urn or her grave. This is pathetic, I need somebody to stop that work, or, because I've been told by Mike that once he places a stop-work order on this facility, that then they can take them to zoning, which then, they have to also go to the neighbors in order, I'm sorry, in order for us to give permission.
Ma'am, so, um, yeah, so, so what we will do, you're a councilperson, she's here?
Yes.
And so, so we allow you to finish the conversation with her, because you're at your three-minute mark?
Correct.
Okay, so, so thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Taylor Sampson.
Taylor Sampson, eighth ward resident, first of all, Liddell and Candace, as a queer, disabled individual in this community, I'm asking you to please stop using us as your scapegoats for every single thing you claim is now something you can't vote on, or is a problem, or is a conflict. You tried to claim you can't vote for people in third ward seats, because they're, uh, you know, queer and homophobic. You literally go to the church of the most homophobic pastor in town. So everything you say in that seat, Liddell, is a lie about that. You're, and Candace, your whole entire allyship is also false, I'm sick of it. And now you're gonna use autistic people like me as a way to claim that my councilpeople on this side of the room aren't voting on, no, that whole entire FIM thing was all a mess, and you know it. That was never even mentioned, and now you're gonna try and tell that you care about autistic people, you don't. You've never cared about disabled people once in these chambers, you literally kick us out all the time. You don't care if people are up here saying these things, asking for help because they're disabled, you literally do not care, and I know neither of you are gonna look at me, because you're cowards. You will not make eye contact with anyone, and there are resolutions up there tonight for the police in city, in the city of Flint to get more money. I am asking council to stop voting yes on these police officers getting any more funding until we get a whole restructure. Terrence Green needs to go, the things that we witness in these chambers, with them taking us out of this room, it is our right to be here, you cannot keep weaponizing the police on us and claim that it's legal, it is not. And what you did to Jedediah last week, I can't believe you're even still trying to pull anything. Neely, I'm talking to you on the camera again, knock it off. The game has been lost, and anything you do from here on out will be another lawsuit on the taxpayers' dime. And I keep telling everyone we need to go after the bonds of you on council, and it's starting to happen. And guess what, if we get your bonds, you will never hold another office again, because you will not be bonded again. So Liddell, Leon, who is conveniently not here again, Judy, and Candace, I'd start acting a little bit better, because we're coming, we're sick of it, and now we have people backing us up that are actually doing the right thing, and they're going to federal. Skip Tennessee County, there is no one here helping us, and we're so sick of it. We're fed up, and there's a change coming, this summer is a summer of change, and I'm speaking on it, I am manifesting that, we are done, we are sick of you, you will be out of those chairs, and we will never have to see your faces and hear your voices on that dais ever again.
Alright, so next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Kwanah Mack.
Hello, man, I didn't even want to go after that. You know what, thank y'all for that little Saturday Night Live skit you and, um, Candace trying to pull. These people came before y'all before, you ain't give them no money. Give them that three hundred thousand like you give the Greater Holy Temple and your friends. Give them that fifty thousand for your Bear Service Park over there, and, uh, three hundred thousand for your water lab over there, you see what I'm saying? Big mouths, wah-wah-wah-wah-wah-wah, you see what I'm saying? Can't wait till y'all get out of here, everybody know the real you, and you too Judy. Just want y'all to get out of here, it's a brand-new day, and you know what? Page eleven, y'all got on here, um, the candidates, I think y'all need to take off two names, Richard Jones and Carrie Nelson. Davina, get on that paperwork. But, um, what is it, Miss, uh, I always like to, uh, tape stuff, I got something for you. Don't mess with my phone, Paul. Hold on a minute, put it on speaker. I gotta get it on speaker. Oh, did you turn my mic down, Davina? Turn it on ten like, uh, Candace and Moushak. But, but I can say what she said to, uh, Pfeiffer in the garage. It's that Travis, not a Cadillac, you bitch, you hear me? No, look, look up here, you be bumping and elbowing people coming down the road. Miss, uh, Liddell, Miss Tough Cookie, that ain't nothing, and you too Candace, trying to, um, play, what they call it, backfield, or is it frontfield, when y'all went to Dubois, Iowa. Talk about this poison water, but these people up here, Liddell, Judy, Moushak, and Elamine who ain't here, stealing all the money. People y'all at home, get your tails out here and fight before it's too late. See you next meeting.
Alright, so, hopefully next meeting she have a recording together, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next media, I'm tired, the next speaker is Betty, I want to say Hazard, Betty Hazard? Bethany, okay.
Ethany Hazard, West Flint. I've lived here a little over thirty years now, and I had a few good years in my neighborhood. But through the decisions of politicians, who make and break, who lives or dies, what neighborhoods survive and which ones don't, is a tragedy for me. So, okay, I was really appalled when somebody here, when the mayor's wife got upset, because there was a casket in front of her house. I'd rather have a casket in front of my house than put up with what I put up in my neighborhood. A casket, caskets have been used at high schools to teach people about drinking and driving. Caskets have been used in protests before, it's not a new thing. What they did to that young man, I found appalling. When I, okay, how would you like, what's worse, listen, being broken into, having to live around drug dealers that harass me all the time, people coming at my house at one-thirty in the morning waking me up, and she's bitching about a damn casket, it pisses me off. It pisses me off.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is David Peachey.
Not here.
Next speaker is Mary Wright.
Mary Wright, 5th Ward. Just got one question, and any of you guys up there can answer it. I wanna know why St. Mark's held to a certain zip code. Have you guys checked all the other churches that y'all gave funding to? Because don't nobody ask for ID. So if y'all gonna be fair, be fair all across the board. That's all I gotta say.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The final speaker for this meeting is Jasmine McKinney.
Oh, where do I start? Shame on you. The last time I was at this lectern, I said shame on you then. Shame on you again. Taylor Sampson said it's gonna be, uh, I don't remember exactly what she said. She was so powerful. She, she, she talked about the summer. And so I encourage all of you that aren't familiar to familiarize yourself with red summer. Because we're gonna have a red summer here in Flint, Michigan. I wanna make sure I get everything I wanna say. Because I don't intend to be before you again, but shame on you because, again, my friend, was it Mary? She's correct. You are totally out of order with the way you have been treating St. Mark Baptist Church in your ward. A ward I grew up in, a ward my father represented, much better than you. Shame on you for claiming that you're a Flint Northern Viking when you act like nothing. You act like you ain't got no home training, no high school diploma, no college degree, and definitely not a PhD. I know you didn't get it from Howard. They gave it to you at Western, where my sister went and currently works. But shame on you. She's ashamed of you. Many Vikings are ashamed of you. Many of your friends talk to me and tell me they are ashamed of the way that you behave and represent our school and our community. You don't put anybody out the people's house. You can throw her out this meeting all you want to, but you cannot throw her out the people's house. This is the people's house. We are the people. She said, my other friend Bethany, she said she'd rather have a casket outside her house than other things. I'd rather have a casket with nobody than a casket filled with bodies. So shame on you, Chief Green. Because you can fill many bodies up, and we have. Lawrence Moon works tirelessly. That's one of your mentors, Wright. I wanna remind you that you are here to protect the Constitution. You are here, you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States. You do not. And I wanna remind you one last thing about an outside agitator. A wise man once said, whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. Never again can we afford to live with the narrow provincial outside agitator idea. Anyone who lives in the United States can never be considered an outsider.
Ma'am, that's your warning.
Anywhere in this country. I am done, and so I will sit down now.
That's your warning.
No, I ain't got no warning.
Thank you. Next speaker. Is that, uh, let's stop yelling out. Ma'am, that's your second warning. Please be removed from the meeting.
I will leave, because I didn't even plan on coming. But I sat there and listened to you.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Shame on the way you have treated St. Mark Baptist.
Ma'am, you are asked to be removed from this meeting. Officers, please remove her from this meeting. You cannot make a loud exit. This goes against council rules according to the City Code subsection. It says if they persist, if they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed. Unless you wanna be arrested, she needs to dip. Thank you. All right, so if she proceeds to, she's proceeding according to our subsection, she's putting herself in the category to be arrested. Let's not do this. According to our Flint City Code subsection 3110. Thank you. So since that's the last public speaker, do we have anyone that would like to have council response?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
Yes, I wanna address Ms. Jobin and her comments about going to, um, other municipalities and other meetings. You know, I have been in meetings where she's at, and she's able to conduct herself in a peaceful and quiet manner. Unfortunately, the chaos that is allowed in here of all the clapping and, and everything actually encourages the behavior that she exhibits here. But I know that she can do better because I've seen it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Priestley. Anyone else would like to respond to council response?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Uh, Woodrow Green, welcome back. You abuse your position and your power, and then you get angry when the residents respond. And it is unfair that our police department is weaponized against the residents. It's a true fact. You allow no space for people. It's your way or the doorway. You're disrespectful, you're condescending. And you lie, a lot. And just for the record, uh, so that you know, Pastor Thompson has been here. You heard Sister Audrey Muhammad state what you did at the library. I don't know what it is that this deep-seated anger you have with him, but you need to let it go. And he did not get $20,000 for his pastoral, um, anniversary. He did not. Would've been nice, probably, but he did not. He did not. And so when you say those things, he's in your ward. I cannot imagine that church would sit so in the corner of McClellan and Dupont that you adamantly and vehemently continuously go against. I, I, I don't understand it. You see the work that they do. You continuously try to tear him down, tear down what that church does. You don't support it. And then you have the audacity to be in the line to get food. I'm, I, I don't understand that. You, you drag this man and this church, but then you use it to get what this church has reaped, its harvest. And it doesn't bother you? That's diabolical. It is diabolical. Next week I did send, so the people out there, uh, to have all four. I'm all four, or I'm nothing with that. I'm all four, feed them, or we not feeding anybody?
All right, anyone else for council comments? Go ahead, Councilwoman Mashat.
Yeah, I want to, um, thank those who came up here with some community concerns. I know that there was a lady, and I believe Jerry is speaking with her now, who had some concerns about zoning and people, uh, purchasing larger homes to essentially conduct businesses out of them. Businesses that tend to disrupt and destabilize neighborhoods. I understand completely what she's saying, but that is, because that is currently something that's happening in my ward. And, um, I, I'm with her on the fact that we've gotta get something together around here about what we allow, um, as far as businesses moving into residential neighborhoods and just disrupting everything about that neighborhood. And then, um, also, when she was talking about how they just ignore, um, our codes and just go ahead and build and remodel and do things that they're not supposed to do. Again, something else that I've had to deal with in my ward of someone just up and remodeling something that they weren't, they didn't even get a permit to do. And when the time comes for the city to enact, I think we have what, some of the lowest fees around. You can literally break a law, remodel something, change a whole structure of a neighborhood, and only have to pay $25. That's absolutely ridiculous. She is not wrong in the fact that, um, we as a council really need to look at that. We, that needs to be something that we address and correct, um, as a body. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? All right, so seeing if there's no one, I'll go ahead and take my time. So, um, hearing that I do not give others room, just wanna make sure that I will continue to emphasize that I support the rules. Something that a lot of council members don't care about. And when we have a councilman stating that they're gonna throw the rules in a bonfire, just like Mr. Doug Matthews said, they're gonna have a bonfire of the rules, that's lawlessness. And so if we don't want lawlessness here or outside, why would we have it here? According to these rules, we have the City Code subsection that says that you must, that you will receive a warning for yelling out, just like Ms. Jasmine McKinney just did. Yes, her father was the former 2nd Ward person, and he did a great job. But guess what? Um, as we walk in his legacy, we wanna make sure that we adhere to the rules that are in place. I know that he would be for law and order and the rules, followed by everyone, including his daughter. Next, we wanna make sure that the people that had issues, such as the lady in the corner, that she speak with her respective councilperson. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Mashat, for, um, looking into that issue for her as you are in the 7th Ward, and that's an issue of the 5th Ward. In terms of St. Mark, I vote against them, not so. Last year, before Councilman Murphy died, we allocated $75,000 from the CDBG funds for them, and I proudly voted yes. But what I won't do, I'm not gonna bend the rules for my friends, just like we've seen it happen here. Whether it's pastor, whether it's friend, whether you're in my ward, if you're not following the rules, I don't have anything for you. And so hopefully, we all will have that same regard for the rules. But if we don't, that's something between you and your residents. So let's stop trying to gaslight the people, make it look like I'm not for the people, as I work tirelessly out here for the people. So, as we're gonna, as we move on, we will, we are on the consent agenda. Yes, Ms. Priestley?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, motion has been made by the Councilwoman in the 4th Ward, supported by the Councilwoman in the 7th Ward. Any separations?
Um, yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
I would like to separate, um, 250127 opioid settlement fund. Also, the, uh, 250141 grant acceptance, um, for the Saki Sapphires Conference. And 250146, that is the amendment resolution for the Flint Police Department.
All right, so, one second. 146, and then I heard Saki.
That's 250141.
Page eight, page eight.
Thank you. All righty. And then what was the last, the first one? What was the first one?
Opioid settlement, 250127. Page six of 11. All right, got it.
Thank you. All right, any more separations?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Jared.
I'd like to separate 250154, the setting of public hearing, drink water system improvements, 2026 drinking water state revolving fund, the project plan.
Okay, so you said 154?
154, 250154.
Okay, got it. All right. So, any more? All right, so seeing if there's no more. We, the consent agenda will consist of uh, resolution to, well, the presentation of minutes with any corrections, as well as, uh, appointments, excuse me, 250061, 250096, resolution 250087, 250120, 250121, 250123, 250124, 250125, as well as 250126, 250128, 250129, 250130, 250142, 250143, 250144, 250145, and 250147. All right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Dr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yep.
Ms. Wimpy Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jared?
Yes.
Mr. Elamine is not in. The vote is five yes, zero no?
All right, the vote is five ye, you said five yes and zero no? Okay. So the consent agenda passes. So now we're on to our first item of separation, and that is resolution 250127. With the pleasure of the body.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
Make a motion to approve 250127.
All right, motion to approve. Any support? Support by the Councilwoman in the 7th Ward. Um, any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Um, through you two, um, Fire Chief Wiggins, or whoever can speak to it, someone from the Fire Department, they could come forth. So in this, in this, um, it's about, it states the opioid settlement fund. And so I've got a couple of questions, um, with what type of equipment that you're going to get? Because there is a part of this, and this, it states, et cetera. So what is et cetera? And good evening.
I'm sorry, did you ask the question while we were coming up?
I did to kind of, yeah, if you didn't hear, I can start it over.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're, in this, it states that it's for opioid, and it states the equipment, but in it, it states for such equipment as in, um, rescue, medical and life safety supplies, um, decal-ing equipment, and et cetera. What is et cetera?
Most of it's gonna be supporting for the ambulance, uh, equipment such as, uh, the, we stocked the ambulance with a lot of, um, equipment, supplies, bandages. I want, uh, Chief Kwame Hogan, he is the administrator of the ambulance program, and he can speak to that point.
Okay, very well.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. We can't really draw a amount. Um, once we get the ambulance, we have to fully stock it. Then there's gonna be costs to get it licensed. So we can't put a dollar amount to that, so that's kinda what the et cetera means. Uh, we are buying an ambulance with these funds. Uh, we're gonna expand the program. Um, but we just can't put a definite dollar amount, um, on how much supplies that we're gonna buy.
So in accounting, you have to like align, not like a line item. And so it would be what type of your supplies? Um, I know we have opioid problem and then for ambulance, but you cannot put et cetera. That's, that leaves too much, that's anything. Et cetera could be anything. And so, um, I would've liked to have seen in here for it to state if you are getting, um, I don't know what you use in, in, for what you're really saying. What are the things that you're saying you can't not get a, what is that you cannot do a, a, a inventory list of? What are the things that you're saying you can't get that?
Band-aids, um, uh, triangle bandages, um, the supplies for some of the equipment that we're gonna buy. Uh, we, we, we don't know exactly what is going to be. Um, the, the Fire Department itself has went above and beyond the money that council has graciously, graciously given us to support the ambulance. that council has graciously, graciously given us to support the ambulance. So we don't actually know what the end amount is, is gonna be to supply.
Okay, but what about the name of the supplies? Instead of, I won't vote on it with etcetera. You need to have, it state what it is. So if you're saying you need bandages, gauze, or whatever it is, I mean, you have etcetera, which leaves it very broad. That etcetera could be, and I'm not saying that you, you would, but I'm just saying we're, you know, we have to be, when we're doing a resolution, it has to be, you fix that, I'll vote on it. I don't think we have, we only have five people, so.
And, and that's perfectly understanding. When we get into the ambulance, there's so many charges that can come with the licensing of it, and the licensing agents will change directions in midstream. So when we say etcetera, as you can see, we're buying equipment now that we don't have. We're buying what we call thumpers. Instead of us doing chest compressions all day long, we'll hook up a machine to you and it does it itself. Well, that has.
Chief Wiggins, do you have an opioid plan? Because this should be listed in your opioid plan. Do you have one?
We have an opioid plan.
I haven't seen it.
That insists, well, nobody has asked for it.
Oh, could you get us a copy, please?
Absolutely.
Yes, because I know we have an opioid, my time is, I have to catch you on the next round, I'm sorry.
But we'll get you, we'll get you an opioid plan.
So, next, speaker in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
I'm gonna kind of pick up from what Ms. Burns said about the etcetera. Did we have a list? And I, I don't know which resolution we had in purchasing the other ambulances. We had a dollar amount. You said that the amount of money that was spent to stock that ambulance came from your supplies and not out of the opioid monies, correct? Is that what you're saying?
We, we, we get what we can get out of the opioid settlement money, and we also get it out of our normal budget. Because keep in mind, we run medical first responder fire trucks. So we indeed use medical supplies in all of our action. And, and to, to Mrs. Councilwoman Burns' point, that etcetera might have been put in there by someone else. We don't do etceteras. We tell you exactly what we need. And I don't remember us articulating etcetera.
If those, if the wording was to become something like, and any necessary supplies to, in order to put that ambulance on the road, or word is of that effect, that would solve that issue from, through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Burns. If we said any necessary supplies to make this ambulance licensable.
Oh, excuse me, I was looking at that.
Because they don't know exactly what it's gonna take. That's, I'm just trying to find a wording that would work, that would satisfy that.
I don't think that wording would, would work. Say that, say that again.
And any necessary supplies and items needed to get the ambulance licensed and on the road.
I think we need to probably refer to legal, it's not my, my term, I would refer to legal, what.
Okay, I was just checking to see if that would be acceptable to you.
I would check, check with legal for the proper.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the city attorney.
And, and please be advised, if we're operating the ambulance and something new come out that's gonna be best for our public, we, we get it. We get it out of our budget, we find a way to get it, a better way for our people to run the services. Narcan, if they come out with new Narcan, new ways of us giving a person the Narcan, new, we're going after it. I don't like that word, etcetera, and it will be changed. I'm, I'm gonna find out who put it in there, because there's no etceteras.
Attorney Gurley.
I'm sorry.
You can definitely amend it to add the more qualifying language so that it's related specifically to what the chief is talking about for the equipment.
Chief, if we delay this vote until the next council meeting, are we gonna lose an ambulance like we have, we, is, are we that tight on time?
Well, we'll have to rebid, we'll have to go out for rebid again for the ambulance.
So that delays it more time? I'm going to, I'm gonna, I'm going to. I just was wondering.
And we, and we will lose the Lucas devices.
Okay, so I'm going to.
Those things I told you about, thumpers.
Okay, I'm going to make an, a motion to amend the language, and I gotta go to the, the resolution. Give me just a second. This is two five one two seven. Oh, I don't, I missed it when I bookmarked it. I'm looking for the wording. Oops, there it is, it's sideways, that's why. Alright, so. Alright, so the important part of this is that it is resolved. And so I don't know that it necess- it's the whereas has the etcetera. So I'm gonna amend the etcetera. Additional supplies are needed to outfit the apparatus as needed to get the, to be able to use the ambulance and be licensed.
Repeat that? As needed.
As ne- as necessary.
Alright, yeah, you had the motion, go ahead.
Okay, as necessary to prepare the ambulance for licensed use. I like that word being better.
And you know, I just found that word, etcetera, and it should not be there.
I read it, be it resolved, because that's where, that's the legal words. So additional supplies as needed to prepare the vehicle for operation as a licensed ambulance.
It works.
Need support?
Oh, alright, supported by the councilwoman in Seventh Ward. Alright, one second. Alright, so the motion on the floor is to make two five zero, to amend two five zero one two seven to two five zero one two seven point one.
First of all, we have to do the language.
I didn't hear you.
We have to do the language first, prove it, then we amend it.
Okay. So, it's a motion on the floor to change the language to as necessary to prepare the ambulance for licensed use. Alright? Alright, so there's a motion on the floor to adjust the language to that? To amend the language to say as necessary to prepare the ambulance for licensed use.
Basically, yeah. I don't know, I don't remember the exact word that I used.
I would like to get legal to, to give us some better language.
Okay, so hold on, wait a minute, because who has the floor now? We have Ms. Priestley, and so, let me go ahead and just double check.
Because I didn't write it down.
Right, I mean, I wrote down exactly what you said.
Okay.
Alright, so.
I know the first time I said I didn't like it.
Right, so, so let, let me, let me check, because on this motion, I thought this was to put it as a point one, to amend the language.
It will, we have to amend the language then, council.
Okay, got you. So, so through, so to the attorney, do you have any language recommendation for this part? Because Ms. Priestley recommended as necessary to prepare the ambulance for licensed use?
Yeah, that's being used.
Yeah, I'm looking for that reso now in the packet.
It's sideways.
Okay.
It's page one hundred and seventy-five in my, in my packet.
Excuse me. It was hard to find. Because it was buried. It was after the source, well, here it is. Oh, thank you. Oh, she found it, okay.
Go ahead.
Do you, the clerk may be able to give us the correct language so that our resolution is correct.
That what she repeated was like the last time she did write it, as I said it.
Okay, that didn't sound right to me.
Alright, so. So what, what we can do, we can take, we can take a five-minute recess, so we can get the language? Alright, so five-minute recess ordered without objection.
Exactly, that's what I was just saying. That's all we have to do.
Okay, I knew.
So it's whatever equipment needs to be purchased so that it can be ready.
So we can just strike etcetera.
Yeah.
And this, because that, I'm like, that leaves you guys open to, you don't want them hitting, you know, so.
Yeah, but I don't see that in her.
It's in, I read in the, it's in one of, I read it when it first came out.
Right, but it's not here.
I used to teach, because I'm an engineer, a former one. And I'm used to doing contractual, with contracts, so my eye just picks that.
Just remove this, such as the cabin equipment, rescue equipment, medical and life safety equipment, and whatever's necessary to prepare it for licensed use.
I'm not, I'm not, all we have to do is strike etcetera, all that, yeah, that's it.
It's not listed though, is it? No, it's, it's, it's in the whereas, which is where the legal part is, it doesn't have any listed. Right, so just strike it.
Strike it.
Everything else should be fine. Okay, so we'll just strike the word etcetera. Is that correct? Oh, you'll never find it, no search. You will not find it. Because it's small individuals. Yeah, somewhere down. Yeah, all you gotta do is just strike the, the, the etcetera, because it's not even in the. Okay. That was, I think that was just. Alright, so. It's not in the whereas, it's just in the.
Okay. Okay, I just talked to, strike. That's, that's a Lauren thing.
Okay, so we'll just. She agreed to strike. Alright, we'll just strike that. We'll just strike that. So I guess the solution for the chief is just to make sure that he has everything in this sentence that he needs. That's why I wanted, that's why I changed that sentence.
I think they got a pretty good handle. Yeah, I think they got a pretty good handle.
Alright, we'll just strike. Alright, so if I, in order to do that, she has to withdraw her second, and I'll withdraw, withdraw my motion. And then we'll just strike him, pardon what? But everything that's listed on here, you guys are good with, other than the etcetera. How do we do this, right? So that we can just change to strike out etcetera? Okay, okay, alright, 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 I will draw a motion. Thank you. Okay, we're good.
Move it, okay. Well, they asked me back there, and I said, we don't write these, Lauren writes these. So, so, so the next.
Alright, so. So council's about to re-adjourn. Roll call Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamin is not in. Ms., Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Machat?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
You have six members present.
Alright, so we have six members present.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
Yes, I, with your permission, I would like to change the amendment to just strike out the word etcetera in that sentence.
Okay, so we are going to delete the word etcetera.
Correct.
Alright, go ahead, read them to the record, please.
Okay, so the, the wording would now say additional, in the, this is the, one of the whereas sections. Additional supplies are needed to outfit the apparatus such as decal-ing, equipment, rescue equipment, medical and life safety supplies will be procured in accordance with the city's purchasing ordinance and policies for an overall cost not to exceed four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Alright. Got it, so he struck the word etcetera. Alrighty, so is that wording appropriate for the body? Okay, so seeing that it is, alright, so now we would like to put a motion on the floor to make it a point one.
We have to approve the language.
Oh, so we get, so there's a motion for to approve the language. Alright, so you put a motion for to approve the language? Did we already do it?
You just called for the vote, ma'am.
Alrighty.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, this is to, the motion would be to amend it to a point one with that language. So you're actually voting to amend it to a point one.
Okay.
Oh, so like I said the first time? Yep. Alright, so we're looking to make the amendment a point one, two five zero one two seven to one five zero one two seven point one. And we will strike the word etcetera from the language. Alright, so. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashap?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin is absent. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, zero no?
Right, the vote is six yes, zero no, so that resolution is now turned into a point one. So what is the pleasure of the body for resolution two-five-zero-one-two-seven-point-one?
Madam Chair.
Alright, well-
Support.
Alright, so go ahead, Ms. Mashap, she started it, supported by the Councilman of the fourth ward. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that, that we could amend this and get this done, when I saw etcetera, it, it made no sense, in understanding that when you take basic accounting, that you understand that, and that was unlimited, I don't know, where, where did that come from, was it purchasing?
It would have to be purchasing, they write the, uh, the resolutions.
Okay, and you said you will get us a copy of the opioid plan, how many, um, opioid overdoses are you seeing, let's say a month, approximate? As an increase, decrease?
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say about twenty to twenty-five, and all of that information, you'll have it in the morning on your email.
Okay, well, thank you for that, thank both of you, I appreciate you.
Thank you for your support, everybody.
Alright, thank you.
Amen.
Anyone else in the first round? Anyone else in the second round? Alright, seeing that there's no one, thank you so much, um, I appreciate you. And that thumper really can come in handy, because that's someone that worked on the rigs, I, and had to perform CPR on Flint residents. Uh, I understand how important it is, so thank you for everything that you do for saving lives, it's important. Alright, so we are looking to vote for a resolution two-five-zero-one-two-seven-point-one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashap?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent, Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin is absent, Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no, so that resolution passes, now we're on to resolution two-five-zero-one-four-one, pleasure of the body.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
Motion to approve.
Alright, motion to approve, any support?
Support.
Supported by the Councilwoman in the sixth ward, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms.
If there's someone can speak to the Saki program.
Alright, can someone with, with Saki knowledge approach the elector? Anyone has that Saki knowledge? No? Okay, it looks like no one is here this evening.
So, no one is here from the police department?
Hmm, well, we do see two officers that have been escorting people out, but they don't have the knowledge. Um, sir, stop yelling out.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, anyone else in the first round? Anyone else in the second round? Okay. So, um, so looking at this, I'll take my time speaking the second round, it looks like we are entering into a grant from the community foundation, so the Saki unit can receive five thousand dollars. And so, I went to the Saki conference last year. Uh, it was myself, I think I remember Councilwoman Mashap being there as well.
I was there.
Yeah, and you went-
Off and on.
Yep, so also, Councilwoman Priestley, you all be everywhere, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, and so, it was great, it was impactful, and it had people from all over coming to participate and to learn. And this is our, um, our sexual assault unit, they deal with sexual assault cases, and so this resolution here is just to allow them to receive five thousand dollars from the community foundation. So, and it says here, the conference is a notable event bringing together professional scholars and enthusiasts from law enforcement, forensic science, legal, and intend to foster learning collaboration, exchange of ideas. So again, this is costing the city nothing, this is a, a total lift, and it's in addition to the Saki conference, so we can be just as, or probably even more successful than it was last year, so I'm definitely in support of accepting five thousand, I'm surprised that's all they, they asked for five thousand dollars, because that was a, that was a top-notch conference. Yeah, so, yeah, they, they make this five thousand go a long way. Alright, so cool, so with all that being said, we will go ahead and call for the vote. So we are voting to accept a grant for five thousand dollars, so they can proceed with the August conference. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashap?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no, so that resolution to receive grant funds passes. So now we're on to resolution two-five-zero-one-four-six, amendment resolution for the Flint Police Department, pleasure of the body.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
Make motion to approve.
Alright, motion to approve, who supports this? Councilwoman seventh ward supports it, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
I see Chief Green is here, you to Chief Green.
Alright, Chief Green, please approach the elector.
Chief Green, as you're walking, um, this is for three hundred and fifty thousand for a cold case unit. Can you tell me how many cold cases we do have that are outstanding?
Uh, outstanding, I, um-
Or an approximate, if you have a cold case?
Over a hundred.
Over a hundred?
Yep.
I know the last time I had talked to, um, I think Julie Lopez, it was over a hundred and fifty.
Yep, that could be true.
Okay.
Well, we saw some, so that's why I said over a hundred.
I think we had a, a year after that, it was high.
Yes.
Um, can you send to us how many outstanding cold cases that we do have?
Yep.
Um, and are you using, how many are working on the cold cases?
How many are working?
How many are work, are, exactly, were you using retired officers?
All retired, um, detectives.
How many, I knew of two, how many do you have?
Well, we have two, and then we have some auxiliary, we refer to auxiliary through, um, Gentry County Prosecutor's Office. Those are part-time Flint City Officers also, so I say roughly about four. Two, two assigned to my department.
So two that are assigned to your department, you work, um, with the county on this?
Yes, with the Prosecutor's Office.
And, okay, oh, with the county, with the Prosecutor's Office?
Yes.
So to, um, tell me about it, tell me what the cold case unit is.
The, the what?
Tell me what this is, the cold case unit, what they're working, I know, but can you clear, because other people may not know.
Yeah, so what they're doing, investigating homicides, um, that we refer to as cold cases, they had leads initially, um, but unable to make it an arrest, so some of these stem back through pre, um, what I say, um, technology as far as when it comes to DNA, things of that nature, so, um-
Would that be like the case, I think it was Lapierre Road?
Yes. So, um, what we're doing, we have, um, cold case detectives that are, um, gleaming through those cases that might only need some, um, additional lab work, things of that nature, um, the majority of the issues are, um, we have to locate witnesses, former witnesses, that are, might not be in this location any longer. Uh, we've had to send detectives as far as California to conduct interviews, so just looking up, tying up some loose ends, some, um, specifically we working in tiers, the cases that might need only some labs, some additional lab work, or to convince a, a unwilling witness to come forward now, so those, those cases that we're starting with first.
So the three hundred and fifty thousand, is that like in your, is that to take care of like your budget, if they have to travel?
Yep, that's all itemized in our budget.
How much do you spend a year on cold cases?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure?
It depends, um, depends on what the expense is, I look at, probably the largest expense is gonna be, um, DNA analysis, because we have to send it to a private lab. Um, and it might be some travel involved.
How much are, is DNA analysis if you're sending it to, because you don't use the Bridgeport one?
We can, but, um-
Are they backed up?
They're backed up and so, and we're not, we don't get, um, current cases get preference first.
Okay.
Not cold cases. So we prefer to go through a private lab.
So with the going to the Brit, so this was pre them being able to do DNA, so somebody, what is your oldest case?
I think the one that I, was brought to my attention, might be year eighty-five, nineteen eighty-five.
Okay, and so with this, I just think that you need more, you got over a hundred and some cases, I'm gonna be honest with you. Because a lot of these criminals, you know, they're on the streets and they, um, they commit other crimes. And this is the problem, and they know how to get away with it, you know, they become, some of them become better criminals. And so I think for this, three hundred and fifty thousand with the caseload of over, I know it was over a hundred and fifty, and so we know we're over a hundred, we can safely say, I think that you would need more money.
Yeah, let me, um, go through as far as, let me get that list of cases for you, first of all, how many we have, actually have pending cold cases, and see what we spent so far out of the three hundred and fifty thousand.
So you have money left over from the old one?
Yes.
How you got money left, you need-
I don't know how much, though, but-
Yeah, but you got retired, some good retired officers who could, what y'all paying them? That's my time, so I'll get you on the second round.
Alright. Alright, anyone else in the first round?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
So, um, through you, Madam Chair, to, um, Chief Green. Chief, so how many, I'm looking at this resolution, how many, um, police officers will this funding, um, take care of?
Well, we budgeted for two part-time homicide detectives.
Okay.
And a, and, excuse me, two part-time homicide detectives and a analyst.
And a what?
Analyst.
Analyst, okay. Okay. And this is gonna take care of their salaries, um, plus of equip, equipment, of course, but their salary, salaries and, um, everything else, wages and fringes from-
They don't get fringes, they retired, so they, we're not responding.
Okay. So, um, from April, April to December of twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
Right? Okay. Will this take care of it?
It should, hopefully. But we'll reevaluate it once we get closer to, uh, December of twenty twenty-six.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright, anyone else in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
Okay, and I think, I do think that, um, Ms. Winfrey Carter did allude to this, that this is just extending the dead, the date you are having to spend the money.
Yes.
If we're getting to October of twenty twenty-six, and you need more money, we need that, whatever you can spend by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, because that's it, done.
Yep.
We have to spend everything, so I want you to be aware of that, so it's necessary to, and I know that Shay has been, um, tracking this, and how much money is spent, so he can easily give us that information, um, but I, I'm, I wish we had spent it all, and you were coming back to us for more money.
Yeah.
But, um, I'm glad that we're going to be able to extend this, thank you.
Alright, anyone else in the first round? Alright, what about the, uh, the second round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Chief, how much are you paying these retired officers?
I think it's, um, so they're part-time, I think it comes out to, um, they're working part-time, so, um, twenty-seven fifty an hour.
So, have you thought about hiring some more?
Yes. Yes.
I mean, to, to get through that, you have a big back, a, a large backlog. I think hiring more officers would really help.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, but, um-
Is HR working with you to hire, or?
Yes.
I mean, actually, if y'all go to, call up your retirees, a lot of them not doing nothing but making their grass green? Being the envy of the neighborhood?
That's the, the exact point, you have to wanna do this, you know, um, and we want someone-
Have you guys went down the list to call to ask?
Yep.
Because you have some great talent that is retired, if they can come back just to do this, I think giving a phone call and say, hey, we really need you. You know, if you could come back, you know, for this, the X amount of time, just to work on these cases, I think you would get some people who would respond. Especially at twenty-seven fifty an hour, not fifteen dollars.
No, no.
I'm, I'm glad it's, it's higher, because they don't need fringe benefits.
I've reached, I've reached out to several, and I will continue to do that, you know, we need the help, so.
Yeah, you, you do, I think there are officers who would, um, retired, um, not just officers and prior command staff, which would like to see those cases cleaned up, now that you have, um, science can be a part of it.
Yep.
You know, and a lot of them may be familiar, you know, if they're still local, I would reach, I would go through everybody with your retirees. You know, to, to not lose this money, so that you can have knocking off numbers off that hundred and something of unsolved cases. I would go through every single body with HR, can we have these numbers, let me give, and I, you should call personally, you know, be charming, they may not turn you down. You need, you need the help, I mean, I'd hate to send this money back, and I think you, you need more, I mean, that's why I'm, I hate to see this, because we have a level of crime, and crime, people will commit, continue to commit other crimes. Some of these people might be in other jails, dead, and who knows once the DNA come back. So I think time is of the essence, especially when we have the money to fund this, so I would hope you would reach out to, um, I am supporting it, but I hope that you would reach out, because I know there are retirees who would, who would love to do this.
Yep.
If this is all that they could do, uh, if not, you know, go to the, uh, the retirement breakfasts and lunches, I go. I'm quite sure they would be like, oh, well, this is a good idea, you got some who could, who are seniors that could use this, they could use it, so.
We welcome them, trust me.
Okay, alright, I'm done.
Alright, anyone else in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Jarrett.
Thank you, uh, through you, Chair, to the chief, I think I just have one question. To your knowledge, these retired detectives coming back and assisting with this, do you know if, under whatever collective bargaining or union, whatever, them coming back working part-time, will it affect their pension payment or anything like that?
No, um, so, see if they're retiring, they have to be, um, separated from the department at least sixty days. And then they can come and, um, be at a part-time status.
Okay.
But, other than that, no.
Good, because I know in some cases with, uh, retired persons, it impacts-
Well, yeah, that's a good point, because at, um, at one point, I think they changed the rules through MERS, um, they only can make a certain amount of money a year.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes, yes, so-
So, so, so to your knowledge, it does, it does or does not?
It does not, they changed those rules.
Thank you, thank you, because like I say, that, that might, you know, disincentivize someone otherwise from wanting to be of service and taking on a responsibility. Thank you, I yield my time.
Alright, anyone else in the second round? Alright, so since there's no one else in the second round, I'll go ahead and take my time, um, thank you for your time, Chief, and thank you for, uh, for the hard job that you do, you are, you have a very complex role in the city. And I do hear my colleague in the sixth ward, when, when she talks about, you know, bringing in more officers, bringing them out of retirement. But it's hard when people interfere, especially council people, in their job. See, people look at social media videos, and people look at what the current officers are going through, and you know what they say? Do I wanna be bothered with that? They say, hmm, do I wanna be bo-
Request for information.
Yeah, yes, what's your request?
You sound ridiculous, and I know there are retired officers who want to do this, okay?
Alright, thank you, so that's a valid point, and that is your warning, so we gotta make sure that we're following the rules- So, we gotta make sure that we're following the rules, that we're not trying to take the floor using privileged motions, which you just done and did all night. But back to you, Chief. The point is, you know, as we make this a place where people wanna come back to work, because you know, when you're retired, you're retired, you left. And so when we wanna give you a reason to come back, we wanna make sure that we giving you something conducive to come back to. We wanna try to eliminate all issues that they, I mean, beyond what they have to face, because they have to face murder scenes, going, um, pulling up to people and you don't know what they have. They got a lot of things you gotta think about in the field, so you gotta get back in that mindset. But what you don't wanna do, you don't want anyone interfering on, on your job. You don't wanna have to go to a scene and have council people cussing out police officers, because who wants to show up to have a council person cuss them out? Call them F words and et cetera. Nobody wants to do that. And so, uh, okay, so again, keep getting interrupted, Ms. Burns, let's not get a second warning. And so...
Look, he need my vote, because if I leave, I'm not gonna play with you tonight.
That's fine, you don't need to play, do what you need. Ms. Burns?
I was asked by the police to pick somebody up.
Ms. Burns, that's your second warning.
I'm going home and...
Great idea.
Chief, you need to tell them...
And so, Ms. Burns, that is your second warning, you are leaving this meeting. And please do it in silence, Ms. Burns. I won't, I, I won't. And because I'm not getting paid to go back and forth, my job is to uphold the rules as she continue to violate my time. I'm nasty when I'm stating the facts. So Chief, my point is, I wanna make sure, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna give you everything you need, because as the Chief of Police, you know exactly what you need to make our community safe. So I'm following your lead. But also, I just wanna compel my colleagues, you know, as we continue to talk about them coming back, let's give them something to come back to, let's not interfere when they're doing their job. Let's not curse them out on videotape when they're doing their job. Allegations about me are pending. However, ma'am, ma'am, we need for you, ma'am.
Sir, I'm leaving.
We need for you.
Sir, I'm leaving.
We need for you to be in order, no.
Sir, I'm leaving.
No, we're gonna get that time back, because Ms. Burns wanna be disruptive as she is. This is exactly how she is on crime scenes, and when police are doing their jobs here.
I was asked to come pick some people up, but we left on the bridge on I-75. Get your facts together, okay? How about that?
Right, makes no sense, let's stop interfering.
Well, it does, when they didn't have the clothes to get them.
So, again, officers, can we really, can we remove Ms. Burns for being disorderly? Ms. Burns, Ms. Burns! According to the city code subsection, it says that if you can, and Chief, and this is where your police officers come in, when people continue to disrupt the meeting, according to our subsection, you are asked to, you are asked to be removed. Again, you're continuing to speak, you don't have the floor, and this is what we have to go through. So could you all please help Ms. Burns out of here? And Ms. Burns, let, Ms. Burns, let's stop disrupting the meeting. Ms. Burns, let's stop disrupting the meeting. Ms. Burns, let's stop disrupting the meetings. Thank you, Ms. Burns. Thank you. Alrighty, so, um, go ahead and give me twenty more seconds on that clock, please. Yeah, I don't need them all, but my whole point was, I support you, and we need to make sure that we are, we have officers operating in an environment conducive to staying. So when we see interference and stuff, we gotta make sure that we stay in our business with the criminals outside, as well as people breaking the law inside in these chambers, and council people. Thank you. So we're gonna go ahead, and we're gonna call for the vote. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns is not in? Vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no, that resolution passes. So now we are moving on to Resolution 250141. Oh, excuse me, where, where did that?
250154.
Yeah, yep, you got it. Yep, 154 is the last resolution of the evening.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, any support? Supported by the Councilwoman in Ward Number Seven. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Jarrett.
Through you to Mr. Miller. If we can ask Mr. Miller to come forward.
Mr. Miller, could you please approach the lectern?
Good evening, Mr. Miller.
Good evening, sir.
Um, I know this is for the setting of a public hearing. Can you though, share with us a little bit about what the public hearing will be about?
So, so the public hearing will be for DLZ, the, uh, the, the, the team that did the project plan, to come, come before the council and give a presentation to show what the Drinking Waters, uh, State Revolving Fund intend to apply will be all about. So it'll be the 24-inch water main that runs through the northwest side of town, as well as the Torrey Road Booster Station.
So will, will this public hearing, uh, involve or have any impact on any finances?
Good question. So it is a, a, a low-interest loan, 1% because we are a overburdened community. And so it, it will finance the Northwest, uh, Transmission Water Main Replacement, as well as the Torrey Road Booster Station. So it, it will have an impact on our finances very small, because it's a 1% uh, low-interest loan from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund.
Okay, so at a, at a point in the conversation as well, during this hearing, we'll be talking about having to finance a project or projects?
Yes, and, um, if I may, it is very important, uh, that we look upon this, these two projects as favorable. They are in our administrative co, uh, uh, our, our administrative cons, ACO.
Okay, the consent order.
Consent order, yes.
Okay, okay, um, is that as much as, as you, um, can think in a moment to share with us about the importance of this hearing?
Well, I, I, well, no. Uh, the administrative consent order is actually something that, uh, is due, or, or this particular part of the, uh, of the consent order is, uh, due on, uh, June 30th, 2025. So it is, it is my recommendation that we accept their, accept their help.
Thank you, sir, I yield.
Through the Chair.
Uh, who, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to, uh, uh, offer Mr. Miller that the date that this application is due is June 1st. So DLZ is trying to get it in by May 30th, um, just to make sure. And the resolution, uh, requiring a public hearing is necessary for the application to be submitted to the state for consideration.
Alright, thank you, and, um...
Madam Chair.
And go ahead, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Yes, Madam Chair, through you to, um, Mr. Smith.
Miller.
I mean, Miller, Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller, um, how many, I know you've been knocking down the list of everything that, that was on that, um, ACO, right?
Yes.
Um, so how many more projects do we need to complete?
I'm very happy to announce that this one, that the 24-inch water main replacement and the Torrey Road Booster Station are the last of the quote-unquote "big-ticket" items that we have to complete per our ACO, yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, anyone else in the first round? Anyone else in the second round? Seeing there's no one, thank you, Mr. Miller, welcome back. Next time, don't go on vacation, you did not get anyone's permission? And, alright, so roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns is not in? Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. That resolution passes. So now we are, alright, we have a motion for adjournment. Supported by the Councilwoman in the Fourth Ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Dr. Lewis?
Did you say, oh, yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns is not in? Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. It is 8:31, and this city council meeting is officially adjourned. You all have a great night.
Okay, we got budget stuff on Tuesday.
Thank you, sir.
Or Wednesday.